Keller.
Here.
I believe Commissioner Thompson will be joining us shortly, Vice Chair Barrera.
Here.
And Chair Donaldson.
Here.
We have a quorum of six Commissioners present.
Okay, this is the time for a public comment for items that are not on our agenda. Is there anybody wishing to speak? Seeing no one, I will ask us, let's look at the action recap. The minutes for the action recap from October 26th.
No corrections, I move approval.
Second.
Without objection? Any objections? Okay, well, we do need an abstention. Commissioner Bento was absent.
I'll abstain.
And of course Commissioner Thompson is absent at the moment, so this will be five, five zero.
Do we need a roll call?
I don't think so.
Okay, could we have the Director's report, please?
Certainly. So with regard to City Council actions, the Council has met three times since your last meeting, which was in October. They met on November 7th, November 21st, and December 5th. On November 7th, the Council held a study session on the local hazard mitigation plan for 2017 to 2022. This is the same document that you reviewed at your October meeting. The Council received an informational report on the development impact fees for fiscal years 16, 17, and that report then came back to the Council a few weeks later on December 5th and was approved. The Council approved the Doyle Street Muse Project, which involves demolition of four existing legal residential units and two existing illegal residential units, and replacing them with six new residential condominiums. The Commission recommended approval at your September meeting, as you may recall. Concerning Horton Street Bike Lanes, the Council approved the installation of flexible bollards on Horton Street between 53rd and 59th Street, except for a few segments that are too narrow, as a protected bike lane pilot project. And finally, on November 7th, the Council approved something that's called the Public Market Short Term Parking Phase Two Project. This involves the new segment of Shelmon Street that's currently being constructed through the public market area, a plan for short-term parking on that street after it's completed, which would include 11 two-hour parking stalls, two 15-minute parking stalls, one motorcycle parking stall, two valet parking stalls, and one commercial loading zone. This was, this recommendation was approved by the Transportation Committee at its September 21st meeting. On November 21st, the Council had a study session on the Sherwin-Williams Park and Open Space Final Development Plan and a potential credit of the Parks and Recreation Facility's impact fee. The FDP, of course, is on your agenda tonight for you to consider its approval, and Miru will go over the Council's comments in her presentation. The Council reviewed the results of requests for qualifications for Emeryville's first cannabis storefront retailer, and they selected two operators, Rochambeau Incorporated and East Bay Therapeutics. These selected firms are now assembling application packages for land use permits from the Planning Commission and operators' permits from the Police Department. Major conditional use permit applications for these two cannabis retail establishments will be on your agenda in the coming months, although those applications have not been submitted yet. This is distinct different from the three cannabis manufacturing applications that are on your special agenda next week. Finally, on November 21st, the Council elected John Bouders as Mayor and Ale Medina as Vice Mayor, as I'm sure you already know, for 2018, and they were both sworn into office. And last Tuesday, December 5th, the Council authorized the Acting Public Works Director to solicit bids for construction of the South Bayfront Pedestrian Bicycle Bridge, finally. And the Council also heard a presentation about one-way car share and gave direction for preparation of an ordinance on that topic. Finally, I just want to remind you that you have a special meeting next Wednesday, December 20th, for consideration of these three cannabis manufacturing applications. The packet for that meeting is in front of you, so we will not be having Pedal Express deliver it. I can confirm that you've all received it, because you've got it right there. My understanding is that all but Commissioners Kang and Guerrero will be at that meeting next Wednesday. Is that correct? So we'll see five of you on Wednesday, the 20th, at 6:30 PM. That concludes my report. I'd be happy to respond to any questions you may have.
Any questions? Okay, disclosure of conflicts of interest and ex parte communications. Nothing, nothing, nothing.
I had some communication with the Sherwin-Williams applicant.
I have to recuse myself from the Sherwin-Williams application, because the company that I work for does work for the developer, so I will turn it over to Vice Chair.
Okay, and I will open the public hearing for Sherwin-Williams Public Park and Open Space Final Development Plan.
You don't need to open the public hearing yet.
I'm sorry.
After the presentation.
Okay, never mind.
Good evening, Commissioners. This is a public hearing, a decision public hearing for Final Development Plan for Open Space and Public Park and Open Space of the Sherwin-Williams Project. You have seen this over the last year a number of, a number of times, and it started with the approval of the PDP and PUD back in November of 2016. Since then, there have been a number of meetings where the project has developed over the last year. These include two community meetings, three study sessions with the Planning Commission, and two, it was reviewed twice by BPAC and three times by the Parks and Recreation Committee meeting. And this is kind of the chronology showing you the process that this project has gone through, starting from a very conceptual idea of what the park and open space would look like to today where we have a concrete plan. So this is, again, very familiar to you, and what I will be focusing on are the changes that have been made since the Commission last saw it in October. So the changes to the proposal are that they have added storage sheds and seating areas to the community garden. They have added more lights along the east-west bike pedestrian alley near the sculpture garden, as well as the dog park. They have added more water fountains and trash cans at key locations. They have added more bike racks near building entrances, as well as the basketball court. They have added sparkle plates to the concrete pavers near the sculpture garden. They have modified basketball half-court to regulation-sized half-court. And it includes the removal of two existing trees on Sherwin Avenue and replacement of those with Brisbane box to match the species on south side of the street. In terms of the basketball court, if you recall, the Commission discussed whether it would be half-court or a full-court, and this question was posed to the Parks and Recreation Committee, and they recommended that a fair compromise was to have a regulation-sized half-court. This question was also asked to the City Council at their study session last month. There was some discussion back and forth between half-court and full-court, and in the end, they sort of said that we will defer to the Planning Commission regarding this issue. The second issue that I want to highlight today is the trees on Sherwin Avenue. So these are the two trees that have been proposed to be removed, and they, this is sort of the picture of them, of these two trees. And they are, in terms of size, they're seven inches and 11 inches in diameter at breast height, and per the Arboris report, one is in poorer condition and other is in fair condition. And the reason for removal is to plant new trees along the entire length of Sherwin Avenue on the north side under good soil conditions. The entire sidewalk is going to get rebuilt, and this is an opportunity to have the same species grow in better soil conditions. I'm bringing this up and talking about it is because we received an email from Council Member Martinez, who is recommending that these two trees remain and not be removed. And in terms of the species, she was fine with choosing species which are in the area. So that is something for the Commission to consider as to what the Commission would like to do. In terms, so I'm not going to go through the various images. The applicant will be doing that for the benefit of the Commission as well as the public at large, so I'm going to go through the findings that you need to make today. The finding, the fundamental finding is that this FDP substantially conforms with the approved PDP, and that the conditions of approval of the PUD have been met. The proposed FDP for the park, Greenway Open Space, conforms exactly as outlined in the PDP. In terms of applicable conditions of approval of the PDP, these have been met, and they primarily related to obtaining comments from the community and various committees, obtaining approval of the tentative map, which the Commission approved a few months ago, installation of a bike share station, and dedication of the land for public park and open spaces. All these have been met by the applicant, and therefore, staff believes that the finding can be made. In terms of other applicable plans and policies which apply to this project, one is the Park Avenue District Plan. There are three main guidelines that are applicable. One is regarding the tree plantings, that they should all be Ginkgo biloba trees. This is a question that we asked very early on to the Commission in terms of whether the Commission would be okay if there were other trees, and the Commission seemed to be agreed that there could be a variety of trees in the area. The District Plan also calls for benches, trash cans, and other street furniture to be made of metal. The proposed, most of the trash cans and benches are metal, but there are some wood seating areas as well. It also says that the standard Emeryville light pole be used except on the Greenway, which is what it does. So the standard light pole is going to be on the roads, whereas along the Greenway, it'll be the same lights as the Greenway lights in the other parts of the city. So staff believes that, given that, the project complies with the Park Avenue District Plan. We also have the Park and Recreation Strategic Plan, and the recommended program for, for a park in this area is to allow play for children, allow spaces for socializing, recreation with dogs, exercise and fitness, viewing art and walking and jogging and biking. We believe that all these components have been met. There is play areas for small children. There is a play area for teenagers. You have open lawn in the public area for socialization, socializing and relaxing. There is a dog park. There is exercise equipment along the Greenway for adults, and of course, the Greenway allows for walking and jogging and biking. In terms of environmental review, an EIR was certified by the Council in September of last year, and there have been no substantial changes since then in the project or any change in the circumstances under which the project will be undertaken, and there's no new information that has been received regarding the project that would require additional analysis. So the final EIR that was adopted still applies. So with that, I conclude my presentation with the recommendation that the Commission approve, subject to conditions of approval attached to the staff report. Just one last comment. In the packet, the plans set that you received, you may see a number of additional sheets and more information. These, I kind of made them do it, and it's more for the purposes of implementation and the ease of that. So you have, you know, things like stormwater plants. You have things like a vested tentative map there so that you can compare. So it's more for, it's nothing additional. It's more that's already has been approved, and it's just easier for staff to, when it comes during building, it's just easier to have everything together. So in case you were wondering why it's looking a little thicker, then that would be the explanation. So with that, I'm open for questions. The applicant does have a presentation as well.
Are there any questions for staff? Go ahead.
Maru, thank you for the presentation. I have to, I'm a little bit of a disadvantage. I was not here for the last study session, so forgive me if my questions have already been answered. In the open space overall diagram, I know, I know there is an, there is an alley between lots two, two and four and lot one. I think.
Which page are you?
I'm at LP 005.
Okay.
So the, the, the lots are indicated in, is large white rectangles, and it says lot four not apart, lot two not apart. But there is, as I under, unless I have missed something, I think there is a publicly accessible alley between the building on lot two and the building on lot one, and also between the building on lot four and the building on lot one. Is that correct?
That is correct, and it'll stay, and you will see that when you see the FDP plan.
But that is private property. That's not part of the public open space.
Okay, so that explains why it's not part of this.
Right.
Great, thank you.
It's where the dashed black line is there on the drawing?
Yeah.
Are there any other questions?
If not, then I'll have the applicant come over and make this presentation. So this is the plans. And this is this one. All right, so they're right at the bottom.
All right, well, thank you, Maru, and good evening, Commissioners. Kevin Mall with Lanar again. Good to see everybody, and hope everybody's doing well. Before we begin, I wanted to, you know, it just really struck me when Maru put that timeline up of what we've been doing over the last year, or just over a year since the FDP's got approved, and really what I want to do is, is thank staff and thank the Park Avenue Residents Committee for taking this journey with us over the last 12 months, because it has been a very, we had a lot of meetings, a lot of outreach, a lot of great feedback, and we are very excited to be in front of you this evening for potential approval of the, of the parks and open space here tonight. And so, thank you guys again. It's, it's been a great year, and we're, we're looking to get to the final legs of the, of the journey here soon in terms of the FDP process. And so with me tonight, as you guys might remember, Jim Benzman from EMA Design will be going through a lot of the, the details, and so I'll, I'll just keep it short and sweet and have Jim walk you through. I think the idea was to, just to give you guys a, a brief overview of, of kind of the overall program and design, and really concentrate on the changes that have been made since the last study session, and kind of just, and focus the time on that. And if there's any questions or areas that any of the Commissioners feel like that they would want to, us to focus on, we're happy, just go ahead and let us know, and we're happy to spend time there, but we just want to be respectful of everybody's time, since this is, I know that, that all of us have kind of seen this iteration many times over the last 12 months. So without further ado, Jim, let's take it away.
All right, good evening, planning Commissioners. Here we are again. So I think, you know, we just kind of thought we'd start with where we started back in January, seems like yesterday. This was the approved PDP site plan, and, and kind of what we did is, we had some community input and developed some concepts, ideas from that, and I think, let me see, how do we make this? Okay, all right. So then, out of that community meeting, we kind of developed this, you know, thought diagram, and really got a lot of the feedback from the community on, on what they were looking for, where they kind of saw that happening. And then, you know, as, as you all know, we've distilled that down through, through this process. These were some of the original images that we showed to the community and to the Planning Commission. And, you know, some of them, through the distillation process, through the development of this, you know, have changed, moved, altered slightly. And then more imagery of the open space, sort of the, you know, the activities that we, we kind of, the community kind of saw as being important. You know, areas on the lawn to watch a movie, or just put a blanket out, areas for food trucks, sitting, exercise. And then, you know, some of the, the areas, kind of the north of the site, dog park, children's play area, and then, you know, some interesting seating, something that was kind of different. And then, and then just what that streetscape would look like along Hubbard 46. And so that was the, that initial package, and through that, we, you know, we developed where we are today. And that's here. So. So just, I'll just run through the changes, and then I think Maru touched on them, but I'll, I'll run through them graphically, and then any questions, happy to answer whatever you have. So not really any changes here. This is the existing conditions, existing site photos. We're hoping for some changes here. And then the shadow study. Overall site plan, kind of the major changes are, oh, you know what, Maru, this is not the right one.
Which one?
This is not the correct presentation. It shows the old basketball court. Is it this guy? Oh, that's the other one.
I don't have no plans like this. Sorry about. Let's see. I'll have to. Yeah, I'll need to run to my computer. I'm sorry about this.
Can we maybe use?
We, we do have a hard copy here, Jim. Do you want to just put it on there, and we can kind of?
Yeah, we can do that.
Do a little hybrid session here?
So I'll just start with the site plan here. Okay, so the, kind of the major changes are the, oh, thank you. The, the half-court basketball court, there was some discussion in the last Planning Commission, and Miru touched on that. So it changed from the circle to regulation half-court basketball, so that, you know, as kids are playing, they're learning the, the rules and dimensions. We also added storage sheds and seating to the.
I think we've got it.
Okay, all right.
Sorry about this, Commissioner.
First one. All right, let's see here. Yeah, this looks correct. So we added the, the approved tentative map. Yeah, this is it. Okay, great. Okay, so adding storage in the community garden, adding seating in the community garden, and then, you know, there's adding lights and, and some drinking fountains, which I'll go over on the, the amenities plan.
Real quick, so can we, sorry, can I just, because I know one of the main topics tonight is going to be around the basketball area and the, and kind of the, the layout and the half versus full, and so what I just wanted to quickly kind of touch on is just a quick recap of how we got to this current layout. And so really, the, the original concept that we had was more of a informal half-court basketball setup, where it was not fully regulation, but more of a, kind of a creative layout for the hard surface that would contain the, the basketball playing area. And really, that came from multiple feedback that we had gotten during the citywide community meetings, and then also meeting with the Park Avenue Residents Committee about kind of, with this park area, the, the overall idea had always been about kind of making it as flexible and maximizing the space as much as possible, simply because, you know, land is such a precious item for the, for the city of Emeryville and the Bay Area in general, that we wanted to make sure that we could, make sure, make sure that we're getting the most efficient, or the, the most use out of, out of whatever we're, we're planning here. And so, you know, through some convers, you know, through multiple conversations, we decided kind of more of this flexible basketball space, where if it wasn't being used for basketball, it could be used for group exercise, or stretching, or just any other kind of activities would be kind of the preferred layout. And so as that kind of concept made its way through the, the summer and the fall, we started, you know, we'd kind of got some feedback in the last couple of study sessions about, well, can you look at it as maybe more of a regulation-sized half-court or going to a full-court? And so with that in mind, you know, we went back to the Parks and Rec Committee at our last hearing, and kind of had some good dialogue with the committee members there about it. And ultimately, we, you know, we, we kind of talked about the pros and the cons, and ultimately, we basically came, walked away with the recommendation from them, and then, which has also been, kind of had the same concurrent from the Park Avenue Residents Committee, that a regulation half-court was kind of the preferred option, which I think, as, as Lanar, we would prefer that as well, simply because the, the full-court option was such a large expanse of kind of paved area that would kind of be placed into this area, which didn't feel as kind of flexible and usable, and maybe took up a little bit too much of the kind of flexible space and, and multi-programmatic areas that we, you know, we kind of always targeted for the, for the open space areas within the community. And so that's why you see this before you tonight, and then we can open it up for, for your feedback as well, but I wanted to just at least kind of give a quick recap of where we've gotten in this plan this evening.
All right, so, yeah, and I can, I'll just go into some of those areas that, that have changed in a little more detail. So the enlargement of the, the park area. So you can see at the community garden, we added these storage sheds, or, or structures, whatever, whatever they may be, and then, you know, some seating for the community garden. Not sure that it shows up quite well on this plan, but, you know, we've also added a drinking fountain inside the community garden, you know, for use in there. And then, let's see, that's it for that. And then this, this enlargement shows the, the half-court a little bit better, and you can see, you know, it, it just kind of fits in that space. You know, we're showing a little bit of a fence in there that would be screened by the planting, so that it would contain the ball, you know, for people that are shooting. the planting, so that it would contain the ball, you know, for people that are shooting. And then, so we just, we added the approved PDP Emeryville section, or Emeryville Greenway section, excuse me. And then, this is largely the same. I'm not sure that it shows up quite that well in this plan, but, so we had a meeting with BPAC a couple of weeks ago, and one of the comments was maybe locating a bike fix-it station in this area near the children's play area, and we did that. This is largely the same. And so this was, one of the comments that came out of the last planning session was about the paving. And so, we're proposing something that has a little bit of interest in it, some sparkle, you know, kind of has the mica flakes in it, so that it reflects the sun and adds interest. And that, that lives kind of in the Sculpture Garden area. Nothing here. Yeah, not a lot of changes here. Let's see, so, the amenities area, or the amenities diagram, so, the bike fix-it station is located here and noted there. So we have two now, we previously had it locate, one located here, and we shifted it down to this end, under the recommendation of BPAC. And then, the drinking fountains at the community garden, and the basketball, half-court basketball area as well. We've also indicated the building entries, and the reason for doing that is also to indicate the bike racks that are near the building entry, so, you know, residents and people using that can lock a bike up nearby. And then, we added this diagram just to indicate that, you know, the things that we are proposing, the site amenities, do work at the streetscape with the stormwater treatment and the planting area. And these symbols correspond to the, excuse me, the site amenities diagram. I don't believe there are any changes here. It's all largely the same. And as Mira mentioned, there, we added some lighting at the Emeryville Greenway pass-through, so one here, one here, and then we added three between lots two and four. We also added one near the Sculpture Garden, and one at the dog park area here. And then, this diagram is the public trash collection, just indicating where the public trash cans are, for trash collection. I believe that's the extent of the changes. I will, I'll put it back on the site plan, I think that's probably easiest to talk to.
Yeah, so I don't know if there's any, like, particular areas that the commissioners wanted us to maybe go back and answer some questions, or cover in more detail, we're happy to do so.
Are there any commissioner questions?
Does this conclude your presentation?
Yeah.
I have some questions.
Go ahead, Commissioner Banta.
I have to, again, apologize, because since I was not here for the last, the last study session, so, probably this is an educational event for me. The, let's see. The, you have a slide there that showed the benches, your proposed benches?
At the streetscape?
Well, wherever they are. Yeah, there you go. Right there, the six-foot bench.
Correct.
Is that an Emeryville standard, or is that your own selection?
That's Emeryville standard.
It's Emeryville standard, okay. Okay, well, there's my education. So, do you have an image, or had you shown it earlier, of the fencing around the garden, the Victory Garden area?
That's a good question, we don't have an image of that.
Okay.
But I think generally, the fencing along the railroad side would be the same kind of wrought iron fencing that it is, you see consistent along the railroad in the City of Emeryville, but, I don't know, were we planning to fence this portion of it off? With the park, are we going to keep that open?
I think that would be fenced, and it would, we would continue that wrought iron fencing, something simple and elegant around there.
Through the chair, if I may make a comment?
Yes, go ahead.
There's a condition of approval that requires the fencing along the greenway facing, right at the railroad track, to match the fencing on the other side of the railroad track. Does that help?
Yeah, that's great. So, on this same sheet here, you have an image in the right-hand, top of the right-hand column, the stones, the soma stones?
Yes.
Which look great. Can you tell me roughly what dimensions, what the length and width might be of a typical stone?
We do indicate that on the amenities, kind of the cut sheet pages, but I think the largest one is four by three feet, and then they're smaller from, I think there are two other sizes down from that.
Okay. And then, the green itself, are you anticipating that that might be used for, like, impromptu performances, you know, musical events, or anything like that, or is that not in the...
I mean, I think that'd be pretty cool.
Yeah, it'd be great if they did, yeah, I mean, I think our whole goal was to just have this as flexible for any type of outdoor gathering uses, as the community would like to have.
You may want to consider, I mean, it's perfectly arranged so that the seating, or the people sitting on the lawn facing north would look at a performer illuminated by the sun. You may want to provide a spot on the north, on that pathway, that has some electrical power potentially, for amplification?
Yeah, actually, that was one of the comments I believe we got out of the, the Parks and Rec Committee, is that, I believe on some of these standard greenway lighting, streetlight, or pedestrian scale lights, at the base, you can add a outlet, that actually can be locked.
And there is lighting...
Because I know that was one of the comments that we had got, was...
There are lamps along that path there?
There is, on the...
Yeah, there's some over there.
On the opposite side, I think, I believe this is the area that you're talking about.
Yeah.
And there is a light over here that's not shown on this plan, actually.
Commissioner Banta, there is a condition of approval requiring them to have electrical outlets in the public park. It doesn't specify where, so if you want us to specify, then we can amend the condition.
Well, I think it's probably sufficient if they're having it, I mean, you guys, it's your project, I think you'd want to make it as easy as possible for whoever's going to do their thing, to have the outlet nearby, so ideally, it would be right along that property line that you've got there, but, you know, I'm not sure.
We're indicating a streetlight, or a greenway light here.
Yeah.
And so maybe what we do is just add those outlets kind of all around that area, because the other thing that, but, I think the original request for the power was like for kids' birthday parties, if they do the little, the bounce house that needs the fan to inflate it, or the blower, so...
Right.
That was definitely had come up through our community meetings.
On sheet LP016, your landscape trees. You, the, I have a question about two-year trees here, the, on the lower left, the maiden hair tree, and also the Chinese pistache, are those both deciduous trees?
They are both deciduous, yes.
And, so, what is it, about a three or four-month period when there's no leaves, or...
That's a good question. Yeah, roughly, Bay Area, maybe it's a little bit less.
So, the maiden hair tree, that's the ginkgo tree, is that correct?
That is the ginkgo, correct.
That's the one that will be going up the walkway, the east-west walkway?
And also in the Art Plaza.
Great. On page LP026, which I think you were at just a minute ago. Yeah, there you go. So that shows where the streetlights are, and in the, in the, in the pathway going from Lot One up towards the tracks, you have three lights there, is that right, three lightposts?
Correct, one, two, three.
And that's, I guess you've done some sort of photometric study that suggests that's plenty of light?
Well, the photometric study was done before we added those lights, but I believe that's a condition of approval.
Yes, there's a condition of approval, which requires them to give us the final lighting plan, along with the photometric, and gives power to the Public Works Director to require more, if necessary.
Great, that actually brings me to my next question. Could you go back to those first slides you showed of these, the original concept images that you presented to us?
Nope, this guy, yes.
Yeah, I think there was a couple before this. There you go. So these, I remember these images, I thought they were great, and I really was looking forward to seeing each one of these things in your project. So I don't know if there was any discussion about this at the last study session or not, and I don't want to be a late arrival to the party, but, just, let's, for example, take lighting, in the lower left, you have that sort of overhead wave lighting, is that going to still be something forthcoming, or is that, that was, just didn't happen, or what's the story with that?
Yeah, and I think, I think the idea for that was at the Art Plaza area, but, kind of how that got distilled down was that the video wall was something that the community was really looking forward to, and we felt like there was a conflict between the video wall and, and, you know, the festoon lighting, or the string lighting.
Might that be something you would put in the, on the private alleyways, between building Lot One and Two and Four, or is that, again, not in your plans?
That's not currently in our plans.
Yeah, I mean, we currently don't have that, but I think we could probably look at some opportunities somewhere within, you know, across buildings to put those, like, because I do agree, I think that's an interesting feature, especially during, for evening activation.
So, so the other great images on this sheet, which again, I thought was just great, was right next to the right is the paley park-type wall of water.
Right.
Do you have any fountains in your, in your project at this point?
No, water features, we do not, and I think the idea is just that, you know, they are, they consume a lot of water, and there are a lot of maintenance, so we just kind of pulled back from that. I think this, that's always the issue with showing imagery, you know, this was more about sort of the movable seating, that urban plaza, you know, kind of the Art Plaza, what that might feel like.
Okay, so how about the image right above? What is that exactly?
That's the, that's the video wall, I'm trying to think where it is, and I'm drawing a blank right now.
Is that in Chicago?
It's Chicago, yes.
Yeah. So is that actually a transparent wall with, it kind of looks transparent, maybe it's...
Yeah, I think they project images of faces on this, and it's sort of this rotating kind of art.
And it's not transparent.
Not transparent. So was, you mentioned a video wall just a moment ago that you were talking about, did I, I missed where that is on your site?
So, that's going to be in that public art gallery area, but that'll be part of the building FDP, which you'll see next month.
So that will be on the exterior?
It'll be, because it's attached to the building, so that's why it's not part of this...
Perfect.
Presentation tonight.
And then, the image just to the left, to the right of that, with all the people lounging on the high line, I'm presuming? Are you, are there, is there a similar situation you're creating in your site plan at all, where you have lots of lounge areas for people to just relax?
Yeah, that's a good question. Not specifically, I think the concern was that the areas for lounging could turn into areas for overnight sleeping.
I see. Okay.
Yeah, and then, so to your point, Commissioner Banta, when you see the building FDP next month, in the elevated outdoor courtyard areas, we do have many of these kind of lounging areas, but it will be kind of more for access control, it'll be, so there won't be that concern will be there.
So, would you mind going to the next slide?
Oops.
So this one here, I see that you have the stones that you showed in this slide, which I think are, look great. And then, I was also really taken with the slide, immediately to the right of the stones, the lower, that looked like a wooden boardwalk with wooden benches and signs. I thought that was such a great idea of introducing another texture at the ground plane, that would have really enriched the project, but I think that's not in the, in the cards either, is that correct?
That's correct. We originally thought of this near the Sculpture Garden area, but I think with the fire truck access, you know, that, that material sort of changed to a decorative paver.
Right. Okay, and then, could you show the next slide? Now, this one has in the upper, upper left, these vine-covered trellises, are those in any, any location that you're proposing?
Well, I think you'll see a riff on that with the building FDP, because one of the comments that we got from Commissioner Keller last time was exploring some ways to soften up the, there's a part of a garage facade within the Art Plaza area, that we're going to have a vertical application similar to that, and so you'll see that as part of a next month's study session.
Great, I can't wait to see that FDP, it's going to be good.
Yes.
So, well, thank you for explaining all that to me, and I have one last question for you, on slide, I don't know if you have a slide of this, but it's LP029 in our packet, it's your Bay Friendly Scorecard?
Yes.
So that last, my printout didn't really, I couldn't really read what the total points are that you have, out of the total possible points.
See if I can zoom in. I don't have my glasses, so that might be tough. Let's see. Oh, boy.
Yeah.
So you have 115 out of 219?
Correct.
So roughly half of what you could have. Okay. And that's, that conforms to whatever requirements there are for our town? Great. All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are there any more commissioner questions? Yes, Commissioner, you can, go ahead.
So, I won't take much of your time, I just want to ask a few questions about the basketball court, LP010, if you could skip to that. Yeah. Okay, so, I just want to ask, for the court, it seems like the full circle at the midpoint line, are you intending for that to actually be the full circle with the surface, the modular polypropylene to be composed of that full circle?
Yeah, I think so, I mean, I think that was the intent of that.
Okay. And what is the surface that's surrounding the basketball court area?
I think that would be paved, concrete paving.
Good. And what's the texture like of the court, intended court surface area?
It has a little bit of a tooth to it, but, you know, not, it's not completely rough, sort of like a light sandblast finish on concrete.
Okay, gotcha. The reason I wanted to ask about that is, when folks start playing, and say there's like a light drizzle or something, and somebody makes a hard cut around that area, the difference in the footing of the concrete versus whatever the surface area is, might have people slip and fall, or injure themselves, so that's what's concerned about having that full court, as opposed to having just a hard line, at a half circle in between. Does that make sense?
It does, yeah, that's a, that's a great comment.
Okay. But I'll, I would also like defer if the basketball players on this commission have any objections to that, Commissioners Guerrero and Guerrero. To that suggestion.
I have a few comments about the basketball court, but I wanted to hear from the rest of the commission.
And just the last set of questions, about the trees behind the court, so those are the pine, the, where's the, the myrtle and the southern live oak, I believe?
Correct, let me pull that up. So it is the southern live oak, and then there's some crepe myrtles in there, that's correct.
Okay, so, how tall do those trees get, do you know?
Crepe myrtle, 25 feet, roughly, and then the southern live oak is larger.
Great, okay. Are they deciduous trees as well?
You asked me really fast. Yeah, the crepe myrtle, deciduous. Uh, yeah, the crepe myrtle deciduous, southern live oak. No.
So live oak...
Evergreen, sorry.
Okay, taking the, the audience confidence around trees that they're worth.
The arborist.
They're, they're not deciduous, okay. I'm just asking about that, just because it's facing the hoop, when they are playing in late afternoon, especially during the winter, just guarding, you know, sun doesn't get in people's eyes, since most people will be facing that way playing basketball. For the myrtle, which is not, which, which is deciduous, do you know if like, the branches tend to be, you know, close together saturator in any way?
I mean, I, I don't, I think what you're asking is, is it gonna block out the sun? I mean, I don't think it's gonna totally block it out, but it is gonna, it's gonna filter in.
Okay.
But I, I think it's a, a good comment, and we can certainly look at, you know, the, the orientation of that.
Okay, great. That would be appreciated, as well, as well as a modification, I think, of the full circle to the half circle, are my concerns. Thank you.
Vice Chair Guerrero, I'd just like to make a comment, which I forgot to mention in my presentation, in the audience, we do have Molly Bachelder, she's our city arborist. So if there are any questions regarding trees removal or the planting of trees, the plans have been looked by her. So if you have any further clarifications, she's here to answer your questions.
Thank you. Okay, are there any more commissioner questions? Go ahead, Commissioner Banda.
Sorry, I got a couple more questions. LP 008. So, I see item seven, the sculpture focal element, that's a great thing, brilliant idea. I think that you might want to consider moving it out into the sun a little bit more, so that it does not get shaded by those trees. I don't know if that is of interest to you, or if that is gonna adversely impact the lawn area or not, but it's something that you might want to consider. And then, LP 10, 010.
Hang on just a sec. Go ahead.
We haven't had the public hearing yet, and so comment should really be saved for after.
I should've, I should've posed that as a question, though. I guess my question is, are you happy with where that is?
We'll be happy to study it, yes.
Okay. So my next question, my next question is for LP 10. The, the sports court, the basketball court there, that blue color, is that, I've never seen that on a basketball court, is that something that's like the latest thing, or is that color that you guys are definitely gonna be going with, or how does that work?
Uh, I, I don't know if it's the latest thing, it's just something that we, we liked because it was visually offset from the surrounding area, so the blue just kind of had a little pop to it.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
No more questions? I actually have a couple of questions. One is, since we're on the basketball court, does Lennar have any other projects that have basketball courts?
None that we've built.
Okay.
Yeah.
My next question is about the historical interpretive information plaque. I was wondering if you can please give us a little bit more information about what that's gonna be, where those are gonna be located, and what kind of information is gonna go on them?
Good question, and actually, there's a condition of approval around that, that we had worked with on with staff, so we have not developed exactly what the, the verbiage is, but we, we, it has come to our understanding that it is a resident historian expert that, who is seated here, Mr. Bryant, who is, who has ultimate authority in approving the language that will go on these plaques, and, but Jim can show you kind of where, where we're thinking about placing them.
So those do show up on the, the site amenities diagram. Sometimes difficult to see, but it's the HP, and that's sort of the proposed locations of those plaques.
What are they gonna look like? Because these look like they're on the ground, but then it says that there's, I thought I, oh, yeah, it says pedestal mounted in parentheses.
Right, there'd be some sort of metal plaque that's mounted on a, on a pedestal.
Okay. All right. Any more questions?
I have one, a couple of questions.
Okay.
Okay, my questions relate to the basketball court as well. Earlier in your presentation, you mentioned that you had some feedback from the Park and Rec Committee about the pros and cons, so I'm interested in hearing what the cons were that were presented to you at that meeting, as well as cons that you have learned along the way.
Sure, and I think it really comes down to kind of allocation of space and overall kind of flexibility of use and multi-purpose use. And so ultimately, when, you know, when we were talking about kind of what are activities to you, you know, what are, what are the things that the City of Emeryville would like to have within this park? Kind of the overarching theme was about, you know, we would like it to be as kind of optional and, you know, have as much kind of varied uses as possible, so it's not kind of dedicated to one thing, because like, for instance, the, the tennis court came up, you know, tennis courts came up during the citywide meeting, but then they said, well, you know, that's for people on a very large kind of, large tennis court surface with fencing, you know, ultimately, if people aren't playing tennis, most people aren't gonna go in there and use it for anything else, and, you know, space is at such a premium, we're not sure that's really what we want from a community standpoint. And so kind of, it was that same mindset of like, when it came to basketball, it's like, okay, well, full court, you know, that's, it takes up a lot of real estate, it's, it's a lot of hard surface that, that we're introducing into that area, and so ultimately, is the, the benefits versus kind of some of the drawbacks, you know, what the community would like to see? And so ultimately, you know, through the discussions, it was more about the half-court use than kind of, you know, that's gonna get more usage than, you know, full, full-court games being played and kind of the space that it takes up. So really, that's kind of how, how we got to where we're at. And that was then, so the driving kind of motivation, or just the driving feedback, was just more about making sure that we can kind of maximize the, each, you know, as much square footage within the open space and parks areas as we could, for people to do, you know, what they enjoy the most.
Thank you. And a follow-up question to that, in terms of the, the orientation, if, if it were to be moved in a different direction, because I agree with the lighting and the sun glaring in on you when you're playing with the orientation now, if it were to be changed to horizontal, look horizontally, would there be enough space there without protruding into the open space to the left of that?
Well, I think, yeah, I think it'd probably just be rotated, so that the goal is, is this way, so your back is to the sun, and you're shooting away from the sun.
I think that the thing, I guess maybe the, the thing to keep in mind is like, with the half-court, it's a square, so it can easily, is that right, Jim?
Right, right, yeah.
You can kind of turn it pretty easily.
Thank you.
I have one more question. Can you turn it to page LP 005? Can you kind of just visually show us the footprint of a full-size court if it remained in that area?
Yeah.
I mean, just, you can even just wave the mouse around or turn the projector on and...
Yeah, so we thought we might be asked this question, so, in preparation of... That's what it would look, and so ultimately, as you can see...
Can you zoom out?
Oh, zoom out, yeah, sure.
Can I just see it in a bigger context?
So, I mean, so that's your, your full court right there, and so kind of the constraints or the drawbacks of this layout, as you could see, is that that full court ends up getting kind of pushed right up against the greenway? And so, the thought is, is that, you know, that's a lot of paved surface in that whole area, and it kind of just changes the, the whole kind of feel of that space to, in the way that we, we feel about it, and kind of having that, you know, basketball next to the greenways, people riding their bikes and the ball rolls out, or, or whatever, because ultimately, we don't think putting a fence up against that greenway would be very inviting and, and would be helpful in kind of maximizing flexible use of that space.
Would it be possible to shift the court east and put that landscaping on the other side in between the court and the greenway?
Well, so what happens, we did not, you know, from a building interface standpoint, we didn't, you know, pushing that court closer is because we do have residential units that are located down that ground floor, which you'll see in the, in the building FDP. And so having, being that close to somebody's kind of front door and their, their patio space, we just did not feel comfortable kind of pushing that court down that way. And so, yeah, so again, it just comes into the, it's a big footprint, and so it's kind of gets a little unwieldy unless you really want to start eating into some of that open lawn area, you know, that's over where that sculpture area is.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Okay, if there are no more commissioner questions, I will open it up to public comments.
Public hearing.
Public hearing. So anyone wishing to speak, please sign the clipboard, and you have three minutes.
Hi, I'm Jack Pizzani, resident at 1500 Park Avenue, and a member of Park, the Park Avenue Residents Committee. Park approves of Lennar's plan for the open space, and we think this is a great opportunity for the whole city to have a large open space to gather in and to enjoy. Currently, we don't have any large open spaces in Emeryville, and we don't see any other opportunities coming down the road for another space like this. A few years ago, with a different developer, the plan was for some buildings gathered around a wide oval roadway with a large median in the middle. The median wasn't something you would really call a great park, and the chopped up bits of land around the buildings weren't a promising park space either. When Lennar got involved, they hosted a number of open events at ECCL, inviting the whole city to provide feedback on what they would like to see in a park. One theme that came up repeatedly was the idea of a large open space, and people said, "That's something we don't have." By moving the planned buildings around, Lennar consolidated small open spaces into a much larger one, the one you see in the current plan. We feel that this is a great improvement. Now we have a plan for an open and truly flexible space that can accommodate everything, from solitary visitors to large community events. Good public spaces can really pull people together, and they add to and strengthen a community. Done well, a public space can be a large part of what makes people really love a place. In this case, that place would be Emeryville. Park feels that having at least one large open space in Emeryville is extremely important, and having that space next to a greenway, near, with nearby public transportation, a bike share station, really adds to its appeal and ties it deeper into the social fabric of our city. This is a rare opportunity to have a very special park for the whole city to enjoy. Park is excited about this plan, and we support it, and we hope you do as well. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Are there any more members of the public wishing to speak on this item? No? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. I guess next up is Commissioner Deliberation. Do I have to bang this for that part? Okay. Okay. Commissioner Deliberation, does anybody have any comments would like to start us off?
Well, since I'm on the end here and you're looking this way, I'll start. I definitely appreciate everything everyone has done on this project. I think we're finally getting to a point where we've reached consensus as much as we're going to get, and a lot of hard work has been done, and I think we have a really, really good project. I don't see any substantive things that I would like to change on the project going forward. My thoughts on the basketball court is seeing what we have to work with, and I also came to mind, I bike through coming to and from work every day, and I think our community forgets about San Pablo Park. It's a Berkeley Park, but it is really close to Emeryville. It has two full-size basketball courts, there's numbers, several tennis courts, so I think it's a park that our community could use a little bit more, because it is in a neighboring city and very close, and I know there are at least two full courts there. I understand the need and desire for one, I think what I would like to do is I support this half-court with the idea, and it's nothing we could do regarding this project, but I think in the next part that the city develops, we look at a full-court basketball court in that, because I'm thinking we're looking at maybe a bigger park at that point in time. But I appreciate their efforts of showing us, I think that the full court, because of its relation to the buildings, is kind of problematic, because, you know, basketballs are a little noisy, people get a little rowdy out there, so I think, and, and as long as this is a regulation size, and I think turning that, you know, 90 degrees to the north, I think helps solve the one problem that was there. So is it a perfect situation? I don't think so, but I think is, as much as a court would be used, I think this is functional and usable. So, other than that, I like everything, I'm ready to go.
Okay. Anybody want to go next?
I can go next.
Okay.
Okay. I too am really excited about this project, and appreciate the compromise made to modify the basketball court. I also appreciate the feedback from the community about the space and their feedback about the basketball court, so thank you for that. I, I do see this as an opportunity for us to explore other options and future plans also, and I'm glad that we're seeing some energy and excitement about the idea here on, on the planning commission, and so would like to explore that in the future for potential planning ideas. I, I don't have any feedback about the, the plans that, any changes I see that need to be made. We, and going back to the questions about the benches, and trashcans and street furniture, some feedback I do have about the benches is that, while that is the city, like, that fits the city guidelines, every time I try to sit on a bench here in the city that looks just like that, I have to clean it up because it's full of cobwebs. So I feel like these benches really attract spiders, and a way for them to, I mean, I can, every, Park Avenue, if you try to sit on those benches, you know what I'm talking about. And the same goes for the one just right beneath where we live, by the larger building on Christie Avenue. So, curious about whether that would be maintained by the city or by Lennar, but definitely have some concerns about the benches because of that one reason. I too am ready to go, and just wanted to put that two, two pieces there. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Banda?
Yeah, I support the project. I think the applicant has done a great job at soliciting input from the community and from, and listened to all the voices, staff and commissioners and community, and they've really created a lot of really very nice elements in this open space project. I have to say that I think you guys lucked out that I wasn't here at the last meeting, because the, again, the images that you showed at the early, all those concept things, I, I would have been inclined to hold you closer to achieving a number of the benefits that those images seem to be offering, but nonetheless, you have an excellent plan here, and I am supportive of it.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Thompson?
Sure. Yeah, I too really appreciate both the community work as well as the applicant's work. I do think the plan has come together well. I, I think in terms of the basketball court, I like the regulation size, I think that's an improvement. I also would support the change in orientation. I also do like the emphasis on that green space and not taking away or, or trying to compete with that green space. So I think the court at, at its size is a good size. And I would say in general, I think you've addressed a lot of the, the issues quite well. I think the, the only concern I had, I really liked the fact that you actually showed building entrances and then the bike racks where they were, and I think that you have put a lot in some very active spaces, but I'd say at the, at the eastern, or I'm sorry, northern end, it, they seem a little thin, but that's a very minor thing, and I think overall, it's an excellent plan, so thank you, and support it.
Just reiterating the, the basis of my two sets of questions from earlier on, just, again, echoing my fellow commissioners in terms of changing the orientation slightly to get the sun off of, out of the people using the court out of their eyes, and just changing the, the surface from a full circle to a half circle for consistent footing and safety. Other than that, great job, let's get this bill.
All right, thank you. I also want to say thank you for a lovely project and for working so closely with the community. I do see a lot of the things that, a lot of the community members, including Park and folks at the workshops, that, you know, the things that they brought up are incorporated in this plan, although I don't personally agree with a lot of the arguments for the basketball court. I was at some of those workshops, and I have read the, the letters that Park sent out, and, you know... and, you know, reviewing the information about the Parks and Rec Committee. You know, I support the half-basketball court because it does seem to be the, what the community at large prefers. So, I'm also ready to move forward with this project and thank you again.
So, we need a motion and a second.
Anybody?
I'd be happy to make a motion that we approve.
I'll make a second.
So, that's Commissioner Keller and Commissioner Thompson?
Would that motion include turning the basketball court 90 degrees?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, yes. We want to turn that 90 degrees to the north.
Okay.
Well, approximately 90 degrees. You want to, you want it oriented?
90 degrees to the right, as if you're facing it from...
All right, approximately. Right, we'll get to that. So, that, I would suggest that we add a condition under design, where is it? So, just add a condition under Roman numeral five A, design conditions and site standards, priority assurance of grading building permit to the applicant for the property. Currently, in that section, there are 14 conditions, so we would add number 15 that says that the orientation of the basketball court shall be rotated, what, clockwise?
Approximately 90 degrees.
Approximately 90 degrees. So, is the seconder okay with that condition? I would also like to ask the commission how you feel about the removal of the two hackberry trees. There is, part of your approval includes a tree removal permit for those two trees.
I, I have thought of that and I missed that. I, I always agree and feel that saving existing trees is really important. They've already been established, they're growing. In this particular case, they're not very healthy and that one is not going to get any more healthy. The soil there was never provided to create growth for trees. What we're doing now with engineered soils is so much better. If we replace those trees, I could almost guarantee in a matter of three to five years, you're going to have a tree bigger and healthier than that one that's there. And because along with that, it is consistent with the rest of the trees, we're going to be tearing up the sidewalks there anyway, which could probably damage the roots of the trees that are there. So, with that said, I support removing and replacing the trees.
The same and because of the health of the trees.
If, if, if that's, if you feel that way, you don't need to modify any of the conditions because that's already in there.
Okay.
All right, you ready for a vote?
Yes.
All right, so this is for approval as conditioned with the modification of an additional condition about rotating the basketball court. Commissioner Banta?
Aye.
Commissioner Guerrero?
Aye.
Commissioner Kang?
Aye.
Commissioner Keller?
Aye.
Commissioner Thompson?
Aye.
And Vice Chair Barrera?
Aye.
Six ayes, the application is approved. This decision may be appealed to the City Council within 15 days.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. I've not seen it there, but there's a Strawberry Creek Park. I've seen them there. I about fell off my bike. I actually stopped to photograph them. It was really dusk and I got these blurry photographs of these guys. They are so, I haven't seen them in a long time.
But I've never, I've never seen it until I passed.
I think we'll do that. I think we will take a five-minute break and resume at 10 to 8.
Oh, never mind.
Thank you very much. We have a study, we have two study sessions on the agenda. The first one is the Ocean View Townhomes. Navarro, care to present?
Okay. Commissioner. Thank you. Yes, I'll be presenting this evening on the Ocean View Townhomes at 1270 Ocean Avenue. Here is an overview of neighborhood. There is Ocean Avenue here and this is Peabody Lane to the back, which is a private access road. Doyle Street over here to the east and, oops, sorry, sorry, Vallejo. And then we have Doyle over here. That was a pop quiz.
For you.
Apparently. All right, so project overview, there's an existing one-story, single-family home there and the proposal is demolish that as well as existing accessory structures there and build three new multi-bedroom townhomes. Here's some existing site photos for this. And here's what's proposed. This is a color elevation from Ocean Avenue side. This would be from west, so neighbors view there, east side, and then from the rear of the property, so this is the north side along Peabody Lane. So, project history, the application was originally filed in May of 2016 for four units instead of three. It came to the Planning Commission for a study session January of 2017 and the feedback for both the community president as well as the commission at that time was the project was too large and out of character with the neighborhood. The applicant in April held a community meeting where they showed a redesigned project with three units and moving the driveway from the west side to, wait, sorry, from the east side to the west side of the project to address some of the neighborhood's concerns. And the neighbors were generally supportive of the redesigned project and found that it better suited the neighborhood. Staff's feedback was that the driveway was actually not feasible because it was showing 90-degree angles turning into the garages and so there was not enough room to back in and out of the driveway. So, staff suggested relocating the parking to Peabody instead of having the driveway access from Ocean. And we'll talk a little bit more about that as we move along tonight. So, up at the top is the original proposal that last came to Planning Commission and then below is the proposal today. So, you have the neighboring buildings on either side. You can see that the applicant has reduced the volume of the building in response to the feedback. And also tried to set it back a little bit, so Ocean Avenue, whoa, sensitive here tonight with the equipment. I'm going to try that again. So, this would be the Ocean Avenue side here and it steps back so that three stories only in the middle and then same from Peabody, it stepped back. So, the bulk where it's the tallest part of the building is in the middle of the lot. So, changes since this has last come to the Planning Commission, in summary, it's been reduced from four to three units. The design, the materials of the project have been modified before. It was kind of inspired by Spanish Revival and now it's a little more craftsman-inspired with more wood. The driveway, as I mentioned, has been removed, access from Ocean. So, that also means that there is no need for a tree removal permit, which before, because the location of the two trees in front, wherever you put a driveway, you would have to get a street tree removal permit. So, that's not necessary with the current design. So, all parking has been relocated, relocated to the back to Peabody Lane and the building has been stepped back as I just mentioned. And the applicant is also, they're not required to provide a family-friendly, this is fewer than 10 units, but they have incorporated family-friendly features into the design. So, here we have a picture, this is from 2016 from Google, and then the proposed elevation as well there. So, for the general plan, this is considered an area of stability. This land's classification is medium-density residential and multi-unit residential is conditionally permitted in this area and it's also part of the North Hollis overlay zone, which does not modify the permitted uses. So, here's that area of stability map from the general plan and there is this little red circle if you can see it and it's right on the edge there between area of stability and potential change. And then for the medium-density residential, it's the lighter color yellow, again, right on the edge of medium-high density behind it. And then here we are in the North Hollis overlay district. So, for the zoning districts, it's in the medium-density residential, consistent with the general plan, and in the North Hollis overlay. For the zoning, the base FAR is .5 and with a bonus, it can go up to 1.0. It does, this project as proposed does require a bonus because it's .92 FAR. For residential density, at 20 units per acre, which is the base, you can have up to three units, which is what the applicant is proposing. So, the density of units does not require a bonus. And the building height, there's no bonus available. The proposed building height is at the maximum of 30 feet. So, bonus points are not required in the RM district, but required findings for exceeding the best, for the base FAR or neighborhood compatibility with scale, materials, and designing to minimize the appearance of driveways, parking spaces, and garage doors. So, for the auto parking, estimated van is one space per unit, so three spaces and that's what's proposed, three covered spaces. And the location of the parking, like as mentioned, is along Peabody Lane. So, this is compatible with the design guidelines, which aim for the least visual impact. The only public street here is Ocean Avenue, so it's a unique situation. We don't have any private access. I don't think any other situation like this in the city that I can think of. So, it retains 100% active, non-parking-related uses along Ocean. And it also prevents removal, as I mentioned before, of two existing street trees. The bicycle parking is required, one long-term space per unit and long-term spaces are really meant for the residents there as opposed to short-term, which would be for visitors, someone stopping by or making a delivery. Short-term is not required, but the applicant is also proposing two bicycle racks with the capacity of four bicycles next to their common open space. For setbacks, the side and front back set, the side and front setback requirements are met. The rear setback requires a variance because of the location of the parking garage along Peabody. So, you can have garages and accessory buildings in a rear setback, but they're not supposed to exceed 10 feet in height or 20 feet in width unless you get a variance. So, to accommodate a three-car garage and have it be high enough and also have a little roof deck available in the center portion of that, the design of it requires a variance. So, variance findings are for special circumstance. This is at the rear property, accessible via private road. And the other properties along Peabody Lane have garages and pedestrian gates, so this unique. So, open space, all the open space requirements are exceeded for common open space by twice as much. In the private open space, there's at least one open space for each unit. The rear unit facing Peabody has two open spaces, two separate decks. And landscaping needs to be at least 10% of the site area, that's a requirement of our code, and that's exceeded by almost twice as much. For the North Hollis overlay zone, building massing and treatment is supposed to be scaled and treated in a way that is compatible with adjacent existing structures. And so, projects east of Doyle Street are supposed to fit in with the predominant fabric of single-family duplexes, should be respected. New development should provide horizontal and vertical articulation, and sloping and gabled roofs, which this project has, are encouraged, and complementary and traditional building materials, including wood and masonry, are encouraged as well under the North Hollis Plan. So, here's proposed elevation along Ocean. And what this rendering is trying to show is the step back in the building. And here's from the rear of the property along Peabody Lane. So, as you can see, both of the adjacent properties already have garages and decks on top of garage, in one case as well. So, Peabody Lane, there's plenty of space to turn into the proposed garage areas here, and there's also a proposed pedestrian access gate here as well. And for parking, so Ocean is over here on the right, Peabody's over here on the left. The green spaces show the vehicular, the car parking areas, and the blue, the areas where bike racks can be hung, so they can hang. And then we have the two bike, guest bike parking spaces in front of this unit here. The common open space is located directly next to it. And trash compost recycling has been incorporated into the project also, so there is some feedback from the neighborhood, some concerns about people rifling through garbage, recycling trash, it being problematic. So, this is proposed to be secured structure at the front of the property, so it's a direct short path from the enclosure to Ocean Avenue. And for landscaping, this is showing some of the hardscape with permeable surfaces and the entrances to the middle and rear unit along this path. And then for the front unit, it's a sloped access, so it can be an accessible unit, and this is the common open, I mean, pardon me, not common open space, is a private open space for the front unit. And speaking of that open space, we have a common, I mean, private, wow, it's really difficult, private here to the east of that pathway, and then we have the common along the common path along the other side. And then there's also the roof decks that I mentioned. So, the rear unit has two roof decks, the one on top of the center, here is on the second floor, and then the third floor, one to the east. So, the first floor plans show dining areas and common living spaces and half baths, or full baths in this case, for all units. And then the second floor plans are the bulk of the bedrooms. And then the, two of the units have third floors with master suites and the decks that I mentioned before. The applicant also incorporated, as I mentioned before, family-friendly features, so some of these would be areas such as place to take off your shoes and have storage by a front door, having common pantry areas, dining rooms where everyone can sit around the table. These are all features that are included in the family-friendly design guidelines. And open spaces accessible easily to the family, and additional open space here. So, this project requires a development as a bonus, as I mentioned, because of going over the base FAR, so findings would need, need to be made for that. Conditional use permit findings are required. Demolition of residential structure, so because there's a demolition of an existing residential structure, this would require Planning Commission recommendation and City Council approval. So, after tonight's meeting, the next step will be to go to City Council for a study session, back here for recommendation, and then back to City Council for approval. And variance findings, there's a set of six findings that are required for the variance that I kind of briefly walked through. It has to be consistent with the general plan, there's special circumstances unique to this area or this property, which we discussed with Peabody Lane being a unique circumstance, and that it's not providing, like, an extra benefit to the applicant, so. And it would also be material detrimental to public health, safety, or welfare to the neighbors. It also, of course, requires design review findings. Staff comments, so this originally went to DCC, well, not originally, but since it's last been here, went to DCC in July, that's our interdepartmental staff meeting. So, there are some feedback about needing more dimensional information, more details, and elevations with dimensions of neighboring buildings. The applicant addressed all of those comments. It was noted by staff that curb gutter and sidewalk replacement would be needed along the Ocean Avenue side, and that there's actually a light pole on the Peabody Lane side with a guide wire that would need to be relocated and replaced, and it's not a huge issue, it just needs to be moved a little bit so it can make that those garages feasible.
Could you repeat what you said about the ocean?
Yeah, so, a really common condition of approval is replacing what we call curb gutter sidewalk.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and so, there was actually some sidewalk work done there as part of a large sidewalk rehabilitation program across the city, but because it'd need new sewer and addressing some things on the curb that haven't been addressed, the project would need to be redone.
Thank you.
So, issue for the commission to, issues to be considered tonight by the commission are, does the commission have any feedback regarding the design of the overall project, landscaping, or unit design? And does the commission feel that the applicant has adequately addressed previous comments from the neighbors and the commission? Is it a better fit with the neighborhood, the design guidelines, and North Hollis Plan? And does the commission feel that all the required findings can be made? The applicant is here tonight and would like to address the commission, and both of us are available for any questions or comments.
Are there any questions for Navar?
Navar, I just have the one question. I like the idea of the garages along Peabody Lane, and I know it's a private street, and I don't know if it's just my wishful thinking, but I thought there was a time when the city was trying to acquire that and make it a public street, or is it always? So, is the easement in perpetuity, or, you know, it has an easement on private, private, so it is in, I'm getting a yes from the applicant, so it is in, okay. So, it's not something that will go away, and then all of a sudden, this place has no parking. Okay.
Correct, they do have an easement.
Okay, yes.
Good question. On the west elevation, it shows that there's grid on, grids on the windows, and I was wondering if those are simulated divided lights, if they're true grids, if they are grids between the panes of glass, or if you guys are even at that point where you know you're going to have grids on those windows?
I'm just trying to get to the elevation. There we go. So, that hasn't been specified yet, but we can absolutely put that in the conditions.
Great, thank you.
Question?
Yeah, Navar, on sheet A 2.0.
Hold on one moment.
Yeah.
Sorry, A 2 point?
Zero. So, can you shift that so we see the first unit in the street? Yeah. Okay.
Would you like me to zoom in on that first unit in the street?
No, no, it's fine.
Okay.
So, my question to you is, are all the first floors of the units at the same level, as far as you know?
There is a slight grade variation at the site, and I believe some grading would need to be done as part of this project. But the first unit, that accessible path is going to have to have a slope on it.
So, is the first unit mean that there's no steps, that it's a fully ADA accessible unit?
My understanding is not ADA compliance, but it's accessibility compliance for residential.
So.
But, yeah, so they would, one unit does have to meet accessibility standards, and that would be the unit.
So, that unit has no front steps at the, at the front door landing? Is that correct?
That's correct.
That's correct.
But the other units have, it looks like, I can't quite tell, you have at least one, two, three, four, four steps at each unit, is that right?
Yes.
Each step is seven inches or something?
Maybe the applicant can come up and address these.
Yes, the other units do have, there is a great difference between Peabody and Ocean, but the other units have approximately three or four steps going up to the finished floor. However, excuse me, I'm a little bit froggy. Part of our design session was that we were still receiving feedback on our bin storage, so we're hoping to redefine our accessible path of travel for that unit in our next session, as we have some changes we also need to make to the bin storage area.
Because, because the steps, the number of steps you have there, does it indicate a two-foot difference between, well, I don't know, yeah, between the street and that second unit?
18 inches to 24 inches.
Okay. And then on the same sheet there, on the east side, in the setback area, you show water heater in three positions?
Yes.
And what is that exactly?
It was in, it was in response to some of my communications with the neighbors. They had concerns about where, if there'd be outdoor air conditioners or heaters or water heater units, and they asked me to note those, so they would know. Apparently, there was another neighbor down the street that had an outdoor unit that was loud. So, the water heaters are instantaneous water heaters, tankless, and are noted in that side yard for location purposes for each unit.
Are they at the ground level, or are they on the, hanging on the side of the?
They're hanging on the side, about three feet off the ground. They appear in that elevation on that side, which I can tell you the sheet number in just a sec. I think it's A 4.1.
They're visible on 7.2 as well.
I'm sorry, A 4.2, I apologize.
They're also on 7.2.
Yes.
And Navar, is that, what is the setback at that elevation by, what is, what is the required setback?
Required setback is three feet. I believe it's about five feet.
We made it five feet for fire.
Got it.
Assembly purposes.
Okay, great. I got a couple other questions, since you're up at the podium there, if that's okay.
That's fine.
On sheet A 2.2, you show the, the paving, paving plan, landscape schedule for your pavings?
Yes.
There's an image, a photographic image at the top there, second from the left, and it shows a snowcrete pavers, pervious snowcrete pavers. Yes. And is that, is that what you're planning on? And all the, all the gridded green areas that you have there?
Yes.
Is that the treatment you're planning on there?
Yes.
Okay, great. Next question is in the plans, in sheet A 3.0. So, you, let's see, that's the upper floor, that's, I think, 3.2 maybe. Do you have 3.0, Navar?
3.0 is the first floor.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, the plans show washer-dryer cabinets in the unit two and unit three.
Correct.
Were those going to be stacked washer-dryers? Is that what you had in mind, or side by side?
I don't think, I don't think we've really determined that yet, but they're
Okay, it's a detail.
Sized for side by sides in unit one, I'm sorry, unit three and unit two.
Right.
And unit one was going to be, was going to be stacked.
So, the unit one, where would that, where would that be in the plan?
It's currently located next to the coat closet.
Okay. So, maybe it needs to be a little deeper. Okay, that's, and then, here's just a question I had. You have a closet under the stairs that says FAU. What does that stand for?
Sorry, Heating Force Air Unit.
It means what?
I'm sorry, a heating, a heater, a force air unit.
Oh, force air unit, okay, great. Thank you.
I was wondering about that, too.
Is that a lot?
It's okay, thank you.
Okay, more questions?
Um, hold on. Yes, I have one more question.
Sure.
You have a very nice treatment on your other elevations of two different materials on each elevation, where you have a, I guess, a board and bat on the upper elevation.
Uh huh.
But on this one, which shows the decks, I think, in the upper elevation.
That's correct.
And then the, the dormer behind.
Yes.
That, that you've chosen to put in shingles there.
We did go back and forth with whether or not that should continue the kind of pattern language of being board and bat for the, for that upper dormer. So, we actually have another rendering that shows that, which I'd be happy to send to you if you wanted to see that as a study.
It would be great to see it. I'll, I'll reserve any more observations on it until the appropriate time.
We went with the shingle in the end because we felt that it didn't, keeping the shingles didn't emphasize the dormer on that side, and we were trying to make it blend backwards.
Great, thank you very much.
Any other questions for the applicant or for Navar?
I have one more question. Are the dormers on the, on the west elevation required to get the, required ceiling height on the third floor?
Yes.
Yes, okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah, ceiling, ceiling height egress, essentially.
Oh, I got another question.
Navar gave such a thorough presentation, and we've kind of skipped over mine at this point, so I just, I also just wanted to take a brief moment and thank the staff and community on all the neighbors for all of their support and working with us and, and supporting the project and for the review plans, so thank you.
Okay, we do have a couple more questions.
Okay, I'm still here.
So, I'm sorry, I've got another question.
No, it's okay, go ahead.
So, A 4.0, Navar, if you could show that. So, in this elevation, you show the garage, the finished ceiling of the garage at nine foot nine.
Correct.
I presume that's because that's the same finished ceiling level as the first floor, is that correct?
That's correct.
And the garage, of course, is lower than the
That's correct.
Floor of the first level, so therefore you have a higher garage area.
Absolutely, yeah, then, we are dealing with a slab-on-grade situation for the garage and a perimeter foundation for the
Right, so then on top of that, you have a, a, well, a flat seal, a flat roof, it's going to be angled for drainage.
Correct.
And then you've got a deck as well.
Just in the middle, yes, just for that unit.
Right, and the, the finished floor level of the deck is shown as that dashed line right there.
That's correct.
Okay.
The finished, the finished floor of the habitable space of the unit matches the finished top of deck.
Okay, great, thank you very much.
My question is just on sheet A 04, showing the three different trash containers. Is that part of what you're trying to work out with the trash enclosure, because there's two locations for bins? The existing containers holds two per unit, and you're showing the three types of containers.
Right, we, well, we had a lot of trash comments. There's a lot of trash concerns on Ocean Avenue, bin storage and locations and security. So, at the point where we submitted this design, we were still working with Marcy on feedback. So, ultimately, yes, this was some of the issues. Essentially, the neighbors originally wanted the bins located in the garages, when the garages were located under the units, but at the point the bins were on Peabody, we can't get trash pickup on Peabody, it turns out. So, it only occurs on Ocean, and there was questionability, especially if we had a, you know, a family accessible unit in the first unit facing Ocean, if that was really smart design to place garage bins on the opposite end of your lot from your trash pickup, and would they just stay on the street, you know, basically? So, we designed the bin enclosure and worked with the community and Suzanne to figure out where, where the community would most like to see that bin pickup. It turned out it was next to the street tree, which we are now able to keep. And the bin enclosure was put in for security's sake, because there's problems with raccoons and people dumping the bins or going through the bins. And then there was some questions as to whether or not, in the, in the community, whether or not the, the bins per unit that are required by the city of Amarillo are actually adequate, and should there be like a community bin if you have a community landscape space? And should there be like a community bin if you have a community landscape space? So, that's, those are the, these, this is the issue that we were working out, which also affected the design of the accessible path of travel off of Ocean from Unit 1. So, I will have that resolved and answered for you.
Okay. I do have one question. I was looking at page A3.0 and A4.2, and I noticed you dimensioned the unit widths on the 3.0, and then, A4.2 were not dimensioned, and they didn't look like they were consistent. And so, I think the question was, can you dimension them and make sure they're consistent? Or, or do you have comments or thoughts on?
A4.2, and what was the other one? I'm sorry.
3.0.
Oh.
It's the plan versus the elevation.
Sure. We will make sure they're consistent. I think some of the, we'll, we'll make, we'll make sure they're consistent. Those dimensions on A4.2 are pulled to the outside edge of the, of the patio, I think, for Unit 1. So, we'll provide consistent dimensions that are dimensioning the exact same datus between plan and elevation.
Okay, yeah.
For consistency's sake.
And particularly, Unit 3, you know, it should have three windows, and then, your split line's over, and I'm like, a little confused by it, so.
Right, yeah, okay, I'll double check that. I might also just.
I have one more question.
Go ahead.
Sorry, we keep jumping around.
That's all right.
So, sheet A2.0 shows that the three parking spaces are all the same size, and it looks from that sheet that they are centered in relation to, you know, the rest of the building. And then, in sheet A2.6, it looks like there's a bit more space on the left-hand side of the garage. Is that accurate? Yeah, that portion there, where Navarre was pointing.
I think we were just looking at the, I'll double check. I think the intention is, on the plans, to, my intention would be to have the left-hand garage, have it be symmetrical, basically.
To have it be symmetrical.
Also, to provide share walls, three feet of share wall on the other side of the corner points.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, I think it was just a graphic with the colors.
Okay. Was there anything else that we would like to present?
I am, I am all done and at your disposal to continue answering questions.
Okay. All right, thank you. This is a study session rather than a public hearing, but if there's anyone from the public who would like to comment on this, please feel free to come up. Seeing no one, we'll bring it back to the commission for discussion. It looks like you're ready to go.
I'm ready to go. I want to congratulate you on a job well done. You really listened to us to begin with, and then, the community and your meetings afterwards. I don't have a problem with mission style. I think it fits in almost any city in California, but I think the arts and crafts rendition of this fits better with the existing neighbors, and I think it makes the neighborhood a lot happier. I think the way this is scaled works a lot better. I really appreciate your efforts in the family-friendly. It was not something you had to do. And I'm really applauding you for making for-sale units. We really do want to see a lot more for-sale units in this community, although those can always end up being rentals, but, and there's someone that has a vested interest in it, and so, I think that's always a good thing, so I really appreciate that. Other than that, I think it's a really nice project. I think you need a couple tweaks, and we can bring it back for approval.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any comments?
Nope. I wasn't here for the first session, but I agree in terms of it fitting more into the neighborhood there. So, I think the design looks great there as proposed, and I don't see any major changes to the design piece that I'd want to give you input about right now.
So, I think that, yeah, the progress that you made and the direction you've gone is excellent. It's really tremendous improvement, the shifting the cars back to Peabody, the reduction of the number of units, and the architectural treatment are all tremendously positive accomplishments. So, the only thing that drives me crazy is this upper third level where you have on the, I think it's to the, is it to the east or west? It's to the, it's the east elevation where you've got shingles on that upper level, but every place else, you have the board and batten. And it's just, you know, obviously, it's a matter of preference, but just for whatever it's worth, I think that to continue that same pattern would be very consistent and kind of make it, make the, make the architecture of it more, more consistent and more comprehensible.
Okay.
Because I think it's a, it's a good, good combination.
Thank you.
That's it?
That's it.
Would you like, do you have comments?
Sure, I'll pick up on that, actually, because I think, I think I have the same sense that this elevation is probably the weakest elevation. And it's, to me, it may be a question of materiality change, but it's definitely a question of proportioning and the length of everything, that there's no real division. And the batten may solve that.
Okay.
But the, I think the other side is much more successful, because
Sure.
it is more divided and modulated, and you can, can kind of see that. So, I'd say definitely, this is, this would be the sign I would give some attention. But I do think overall, the project in terms of responding to community comments, in terms of the styling and the proportioning, the improvement in parking, I agree with, with everything the commissioners have said. So, and, you know, the thing also that I think is really great about your project is that it is, it feels much more truly family-friendly in terms of the sizing of the rooms, like a family could actually live there. I do think you'll be challenged on the parking, because I think about a two, two-kid family, and I certainly have a kid and don't have a car. But I know a lot of, a lot of my friends have two kids, and it becomes a problem for them. So, you will have a very select group, and, but I do think that space-wise, you've been very, in terms of this being sort of the right proportioning of space, you're putting the space to the living space, not to the parking space. You're really truly trying to do for-sale and house-like units. I think that's all working quite well, so.
I'd just like to commend the applicant for doing a great job. I know the, the first set of comments that we had to offer was, couldn't have been easy to hear. So, it was really great to see the applicant not just making the improvements that were commented, commented upon by my colleagues, but also doing it in conjunction with the community and really taking their comments to heart. It really shows off, so, job well done. Everything from design to doing what you didn't have to do, like Commissioner Keller said in terms of offering these as truly family-friendly units. So, job well done, and looking forward to the next study session.
Okay, I, I share all the commissioner's sentiments about this. I think it's a overall great design and improvement from the last round, and it fits pretty well into the neighborhood. I appreciate the material variation and the trim detail that you put into it, and, but I do have a couple of suggestions.
Sure.
So, I agree that this elevation should have a little bit of material change, and I would support the board and batten on the balcony. And I would suggest maybe if it's possible to add some bay windows to break up the elevation a bit, similar to what you have on the other side. And the thing that drives me crazy is grids in between the panes of glass in the windows. I think they're cheesy, and your, your building is a very beautiful design. And so, I would support either going with simulated divided lights or no grids at all for the next round if you go through.
See, I know they're really working Berkeley, and they
Yeah, they want like
require those. Yeah, noted. I think, I think, I think, I would agree with that aesthetic.
And, let's see. Oh, yes, and about the dormers on the west elevation, I was wondering if it would be possible to have a little bit of the roof exposed, because I think something that looks funny to me on that elevation, if you can turn to sheet A4.1, or the rendering that has the west elevation, either one would work. Oh, there you go. So, something that looks funny to me about this elevation is that the dormer goes all the way down to the edge of the roof.
Okay.
And usually, with the dormers, you see a little bit of that roof exposed
Sure.
between the edge and the dormer.
Yeah, that profile.
So, I think that might help with
Okay.
with that. So, if, you know, that's possible in the next round, that would be something good. But, and I think that's basically it. So, thanks again for working with the community and, and taking all our comments into consideration in this design. It looks really good.
Thank you.
And I think that we all seem to be on the same page, that you're moving in the right direction, and this is a vast improvement over what was there before, and it's really appreciated that you work with the community. The massing is a lot better than it was, and it's fitting better in the community. I would like to see you work out the landscape plan a little bit better, and especially the private space in the front, on the east side of the front of the property, how people would access it, and what, you know, a little bit more thought to the treatment of the planting. I agree that the east elevation could use change in materials and change in definition of the units that would make that a lot more interesting. Looking at sheet A3.0, the only thing that I think strikes me as a little awkward is in Unit 1. In Unit 1, that the kitchen is, to get from the kitchen to the dining room, you're going through the living room and around the front of the stairs and that, and maybe flipping the dining room and the living room would allow you to have a place where it's more comfortable access to that private outdoor space, and maybe even having a door there that could lead out into that private space so that that becomes more usable and that the flow of the circulation works better in that unit. I also, I did notice that on the A4.1 elevation, that it was, it seemed like the window placements were not lined up with where they were on the plan view, so I'm, when you come back with it more carefully calibrated, that'll be really good. But thank you for your efforts on this.
So, one more comment. On sheet A2.2, you have the, like, this is the landscape, or a landscape, some kind of landscape plan. And again, we discussed these pavers you showed up there in that photograph. So, you, you, maybe you were here for the previous applicant, with all those fantastic photographs they showed us, and then, so, what, what I would ask you to do is, when you come back next time, if this is what you're going to put in, then that's great. Keep it, because I think it looks fantastic. But let's make sure that that is what is going to go in there, and that that is what it's going to look like.
Okay.
And then, the other thing I would do is, I would challenge you to, you have a common open area that's right behind the, between the trash and the bicycle storage.
Yeah.
So, I know it's
It bothers me as well, I don't know.
Well, what I would challenge you is to actually figure out how to make that into something that's going to be useful or used.
Sure. We did, at one point, we did have raised planter beds in that area, but I would, but the community open space needs to be open with a bench, and it can't be used as community beds. Is that?
I don't know.
Is that the understanding, Navarre?
I haven't read it.
Because that was received really well by the neighbors, but.
To do what?
The, in the community open space, the neighbors really liked the idea, and it kind of, we kind of worked it into like the bin enclosure sort of, like, pattern language of doing three-set community garden, garden beds in that, in that open space. Is that, can we revisit that? Or does it need to be free and clear and open?
It doesn't have to be free, clear, and open. There is a required amount of seating, and there is a requirement for a tree.
Oh, okay.
But you can have beds there in a common open space. That should be fine.
So, that'll give me some more, yeah. So, I'll work on that and come back with something.
So, and speaking of planter beds, the, the deck that you have over the garages?
Yes.
You have very little room between the top of the garage curb, or the top of its wall, and the, whatever you're going to need for drainage to the side.
Okay, I'll cut a section and double check.
And, and I can't quite, I think if your, if the surface of your deck is the same level as the height of your, as the top of your garage roof, that's going to be a bit of a challenge for you, too. You just might want to work on that. And you might also consider, you know, the view across the railing of that deck onto the tops of those, what I presume will be built-up roofing material. You might want to put some planters off the railings that offer a kind of a visual buffer against that.
That's a nice idea, thank you.
A couple other comments. I just wanted to sort of ask, think about the green building elements. I know, I noticed that you had solar ready indicated on the dormer, and, and then, the skylight ready, and I wasn't quite sure what skylight ready was.
We had, we had had a different system in our original plan that, as we worked through this plan, I'm hoping to refine the green building elements a little bit more.
Okay.
In this, in our original proposal, we'd had whole-house fans that would circulate with these operable skylights through these
Okay.
light wells, in a Gaudi-esque, but technological, technologically functional
Okay.
nod, and that, and that was carried through in, in some of the units. I, I'll, I can specify those intentions a bit more as I refine in the next round.
Okay, yeah, it'd be great, I mean, it'd be great to see what you can add here.
Yes, absolutely.
Because I definitely think it's an important element and would be appealing to many families, so.
Yeah, we did do a, we did a solar consult, and our intention was also to put EV in the garages, which I'll note on the plans and create dimensions for, and I'll, I'll refine those details
Okay, great.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for your work. Our second study session is the update of the city's noise ordinance.
Good evening, this is a study session for the update of the city's noise ordinance. I'll start with a little bit of a background. Since the adoption of the city's current noise ordinance back in 2003, much of the city's industrial areas have converted to commercial and residential uses. And the city's population over the last 14 years has increased by 54%, and new residences have been placed near industrial and commercial facilities, which has resulted in a noticeable increase in the number of complaints submitted to the police department. Because the current noise ordinance does not have a clear, objective noise criteria, law enforcement personnel do not have the ability to determine whether a noise exposure levels are in violation of the noise ordinance. To address public concerns, the council, city council held a study session earlier in the year to consider potential amendments to the noise ordinance and provide a direction for a noise study. As part of that, the city hired ESA consultants to do this noise study, and they will be coming and giving you a presentation. But before that, before they do that, I do want to walk the commission through the different sets of existing provisions that are in our books. So, the first one is the noise ordinance, and it, it lies in the municipal code, Chapter 13, Title 5. It regulates annoying or excessive noise that disturbs any reasonable person of normal sensitivity. It sets general noise standards for all noise, including construction noise. It establishes a waiver procedure for evening and weekend construction work. It specifies a list of prohibited acts. It includes provisions related to leaf blowers, generators, and other loud equipment and loud parties and gatherings. It also establishes penalties for violations, and it declares that violations are deemed public nuisances. It does not establish specific noise limits, i.e. decibel levels that can be measured. The second piece of regulation is regarding, connected with noise, is the performance standards in the planning regulations. These include provisions related to air quality, light and glare, as well as noise and vibration. The noise standards set maximum permitted noise levels in decibels for both daytime and nighttime in and nighttime in, in the RM or the medium-density residential zone, and, and in all other zones. So, there are two categories, the RM zone and all other zones. Performance standards also stimulate, stipulate, when measurements are necessary in the enforcement of these performance standards, they shall be made by careful, by competent, competent professionals in the applicable field in accordance with accepted professional practice. The third piece that is covered by noise is the noise element of the general plan. This element contains an assessment of the existing noise sources and levels, and that would be 2003, when it was established, including freeways and local roads, railroad, airport, industrial uses, construction, and other equipment, as well as projected noise sources and levels. As I mentioned, it includes the existing 2005, not '03, noise contours and projected future noise contours. It also includes a table of acceptable and unacceptable noise levels for various land uses, as well as city goals and policies related to noise. While these three documents each relate to the regulation of noise, they are used for different purposes. The noise ordinance regulates noise generally, including construction noise, and primarily relates to noises that are short-term and transient, such as loud parties and music. Most noise complaints are violations of the noise ordinance. Performance standards relate to land uses that are permanent, and which may have associated equipment and activities that produce noise on an ongoing basis, such as the HVAC system or an equipment. In the general plan, noise element primarily relates to the sighting of new users to ensure that they're not accepted, exposed to unacceptable levels. So, the focus of the current study is on updating the noise ordinance. However, modifications to the ordinance may necessitate companion amendments to the performance standards and/or to the general, general plan noise element to ensure internal consistency. So, the presentation that you'll hear from ESA, it'll begin with some fundamentals of noise, noise 101. It'll give you the noise surveys and the results of it. It will talk, they will talk about objective noise criteria and options, and they will also talk about the suggested updates to the noise ordinance. So, with that, I am going to invite Chris Sanchez and Stan to come and give us a presentation. And let me just open up.
Does he use that to click through?
Yeah, oh, you can just use-
Oh, okay. Thank you.
All right, as long as you speak into the microphone.
Thank you, Maru. Good evening, commissioners, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, good.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
My name is Stan Armstrong, I'm with Environmental Science Associates, and I'll be giving a presentation on the proposed updates to the city of Emeryville's noise ordinance. I will be discussing, as Maru put it, the fundamentals 101 of noise, the effects of noise on people, and the results of the city-wide noise survey. And Chris Sanchez will be covering the objective noise criteria options, subjected, suggested updates to the city of Emeryville's existing noise ordinance, and then we'll be taking some questions and answers. We'll typically be taking questions, and we'll give the answers. So, to start noise, the basis of noise 101, it's a good, it's always good to have a firm understanding of what is sound and what is noise. Sound is a vibratory disturbance capable of being detected by ears or equipment, and noise is, is defined as sound that is loud, unpleasant, unexpected, undesired. A good definition would be sound would be something associated to an orchestra, and noise would be, you know, construction noise, or someone banging on your door. Metrics commonly used in noise is, well, noise is measured on the decibel scale, zero being the lowest threshold for human hearing, 120 to 140 being a threshold of pain. Since the noise, the human hearing is based on mid-frequency range of 100 kilohertz to 400, 4 kilohertz, there's a weighting to the frequencies of sounds, so it's more focused to human hearing, and that's defined as a-weighted. Most environmental assessments related to humans is in the form, measured in decibels a-weighted. Another common metric used in noise studies is the energy equivalent sound level, which is average noise exposure over, for a given period of time. Another common one, which you'll see throughout our proposed updates in noise ordinance and thresholds, is the percentile noise levels, which is the noise level exceeded for N percent of a measurement period. For example, L50 would be a noise level exceeded 50% of the time, L10 would be a noise level exceeded 10, 10% of the time. Another noise metric used commonly in noise is the maximum noise level. It's this instantaneous maximum noise measured during a period of time, that something equivalent to L-max that would be measured would be like impact pile driving, where you have a sudden impulse or a sudden impact. Another one would be a gunshot, you register a high L-max. Another one is the day-night average sound, average sound level, or commonly known as the DNL. And this is the average of the a-weighted sound levels during a 24-hour period, where nighttime noise is, has a 10-decibel weighting. So, this is commonly used in your general plan or land use compatibility noise standards. Just to give you an idea of what sound sounds like, a quiet urban night, well, I'm sorry, this, this figure gives you an idea of what the noise levels are from 0 to 110 decibels. For example, a quiet urban night is equivalent to 40 decibels. Like, for example, this room, if I stop talking, that's 45 decibels. Me talking right now is equivalent to about 60, 60 decibels, or 50 to 60 decibels. Near a lawnmower, if you guys are mowing your lawn and you're pushing your lawnmower, that would be equivalent to 70 decibels. This slide gives you an idea of what a noise increase sounds like, or how it's measured. A one-decibel increase cannot perceive by the average human being. For example, if you're exposed to a noise level that's 60 decibels, and, and then all of a sudden, the noise increases by, up to 61 decibels, so a one-decibel increase, you're not gonna be able to perceive that change in noise. A three-decibel change is considered barely perceptible. For example, something that's a three-decibel increase would be like if you're in your home, and you hear someone talking down the hall, or whispering, or something like that, where it's just barely perceptible, where you can't really hear what they're saying, but, but you know it, there's a slight increase in sound, that's a three-decibel increase. At least a five-decibel increase is considered barely perceptible. It lists, lists a noticeable change in human response. That something like this would be like someone starts up the lawn, your neighbor starts up the lawnmower outside your home, and it makes you get up, or it makes you, you know, wear that he's mowing his lawn. And so, that's a noticeable change in noise that elicits your response. A 10-decibel increase is subjectively heard as a proxy doubling in loudness. This is something if you're sitting at your desk and you hear someone bang on your door, or you hear a car wreck outside, or someone shoots a gun, it makes you want to get up and, you know, investigate what's going on. That's considered a 10-decibel increase in noise. So, in the city council session, as Maru pointed out, and the city council session in February 16th of last year, requested, as part of the session, to understand the existing noise environment within the city of Emeryville. And as part of that curiosity, we conducted a citywide noise survey from October, no, I'm sorry, September 15, 2017, to September 25th of 2017. The noise survey consisted of a total of 26 noise measurements. Noise measures were selected based on their proximity of existing noise sources within the city of Emeryville. These, these noise sources consisted of I-80 traffic, traffic along I-580 and Union Pacific Railroad, as well as surface streets, busy surface streets such as Powell Street, 40th Street, and San Pablo Avenue. A noise survey also covered areas of the city that, which, due to their proximity from these noise sources, have a lower ambient. So, for example, the community of Watergate, and some of the medium-density homes on the southeast side of the city of Emeryville. All noise measurements were conducted using a type 1 or a type 2 sound level meter. Noise meters were calibrated before and after each measurement to guarantee the accuracy of the results gathered out, well, out in the field. And while the noise meters were running, they were capturing one-second L-A-Qs, as I discussed before, an L-A-Q is the average noise level within a certain period of time. Those noise level, gathered noise levels were used to approximate the day-night noise levels and the L-percentage noise levels at each of the locations during the noise survey, gathered during the noise survey. This is the results of the noise survey for the updating the noise ordinance. Our main concern was with the people with the highest noise levels that the cities of, citizens of Emeryville were being exposed to. We chose the L50, and as I discussed before, the L50 is the noise level that succeeded 50% of the time. So, that's around about the average, you know, the average noise level experienced, measured noise level. As you can see, from the table, it shows the daytime and nighttime noise levels. The daytime, we, we define as 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., and nighttime from 10:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m. The highest, as you see in the chart, we have the highest L50, the min of the highest measured L50, the average highest L50, and the maximum. And again, these, these noise levels were obtained from the noise measured data, which we, we grouped up into each respective zoning districts. As you can see, some of the zoning districts don't really have a major change in the daytime and the nighttime. For example, high-density residential has a slight change, only under like 2 decibels between the nighttime, daytime. And the same goes with some of, you know, the mixed-use residential zoning areas. The main reason for these, not a major change in daytime, nighttime, is their proximity to noise sources that are constant throughout the day and night. That includes traffic along I-80, freeway traffic along I-580, and railroad activity along Union Pacific Railroad. Since noise in the city of Emeryville mainly concentrated in more inland, where there's more arterial roadways and busy streets, and, and where the ambient's higher, noise levels were found to be quite noticeably lower the further you get into the bay, away from these noise sources. We experienced this low ambient, observe, we noticed that low ambient in the community of Watergate. Since the Watergate is zoned as medium-high residential, and didn't really fit the ambient that we're measuring for that particular zoning district, we decided, we decided to have that Watergate have their own ambient noise standard, or category, within the zoning Based on information I just explained for the min, ha, average, and the high of the highest L-measured L50, we were able to come up with some kind of recommended exterior noise standard based on that mean, average, and max highest L50. For example, high residential, we have 65 for day, and then 60 during the night, and a medium high-density residential, we have 70 to 60, and there's usually, as you can see, there's, we were finding that as a slight difference in day and night for most of them of the zoning districts, which is about 5 decibels. Until you get to like office technology, industrial, mixed-use with non-residential, and mixed-use residential, where you get the same noise level for the day and night. And the reason for this is, again, is because it's near noise sources that are constant throughout the day and night, so. And again, that's everything. And, yeah, and I'll be handing this over to Chris Sanchez to explain some of the options that we're proposing to be updated to the city's noise ordinance. A lot of the things you'll be explaining will be based on this table. So, with further ado, I'll pass it over to Mr. Chris Sanchez.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stan. I'm Chris Sanchez from ESA. Let me move us along here. So, we developed, we presented staff generally with some options for noise ordinance based on just our experience throughout, through communities throughout the Bay Area. The first one was based on zoning area, using the data that we just, that Stan collected in September, and the idea being that, you know, it would make it easier for enforcement officers, because they would already know what the baseline is, based on the data that we've collected. Option two is a different method of creating a standard, which is used in the city of San Francisco, which is an increase over ambient. That is a little more difficult to implement, because you have to know what that ambient is without the source that you're out there, the enforcing officers out there trying to measure, so it can be a little problematic to implement. All right, bless you. The third option we presented just as an, which is a method that's used for live music venues generally, that have low-frequency sound from bass, can be particularly disturbing to people, the city of San Francisco does that. They use, Stan talked about the DBA metric, for, but there's also a metric called DBC, the C-weighted decibels, which capture that low frequency, which is somewhat annoying. So, there is, in practice, some jurisdictions are using this DBC metric to address noise from live music events. So, let's see here. Objective noise criteria, implement, recommended. So, we, in conjunction with staff, was decided to focus on option one, based on the work that we had done. And one of the jurisdictions we were also looking at was the city of Berkeley, which has these sort of several metrics that they use, and the idea behind this is that the L50 is a useful metric for things that are a constant noise source, like air conditioning equipment, things of that nature. But you want to give people leeway, you want to give people leeway to have some noise increases, especially like something like a public gathering, or something of that nature. So, there's other metrics that you, we're allowing to have the noise standards that we've developed based on our monitor- based on our monitoring that can be exceeded up to a point. So, the advantages of this option one that we presented to staff was that, you know, you are allowed to make some increases in noise. You're not going to be penalized for, you know, being noisier than average on occasion. Some of the disadvantages are that, you know, the metrics are a little bit daunting at first to the people that are implementing. So there's a bit of a learning curve to learning how to actually do this in practice. Option two, as I said, is used by the city of San Francisco, and this is just explained, the things that I just spoke of. You kind of have to know what, you know, the noise level is without offending a source or potentially offending source. But, and this also gives some leeway for people to make noise beyond what is normal, too. And then option three is used primarily for live music events, and San Francisco uses an eight-decibel increase over ambient on the C-weighted decibel range. So after talking with staff, they decided they wanted to focus on one, and I'm not getting any further in this progression.
Okay, we're done.
I don't think so. Let's go back. So we went with option one to more fully develop it, and this, gosh, I'm really struggling with this. Come on.
It gets a little touchy from time to time.
Would we just click it, or?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll try that. So, I want to go up to level one. Suggested update. All right, I think this is where we're at. So as Maru pointed out, the existing ordinance doesn't really have any quantitative standards. There is some performance standards, but those are basically implemented when a project is being proposed, and that those performance standards can be put into the design of the equipment or the building. So, again, we're proposing these standards based on the time-weighted metrics. We also propose a interior noise standards. Not all jurisdictions have an interior noise standards. The city of Emeryville does not currently have one. The idea being that people can be annoyed if they share a common wall and townhomes or things of that nature, buildings of that nature. And so, and also, the state of California at one time, although it's very old now, developed a model noise ordinance, and it included an interior noise standard as a Existing noise ordinance does not really define noise measurement procedures, which makes sense because they don't have any existing standards. So we've included some updates to how to do that for implementing officers. Another thing that staff said during the February study session was that the animal noise components were scattered throughout the municipal code, and so they would like it to be consolidated into the upcoming noise ordinance, so we have included that. And then there's the whole concept of construction noise. Obviously, construction is an inherently noisy activity. You need to, you know, it's prudent to let contractors have a lot of leeway with what they're doing up to a point. We did a survey of other jurisdictions of the area, like Emeryville, Alameda, and Albany do not have any construction noise standards beyond time limits. And then there's several cities that have a numerical standard, typically 75 to 80 decibels of the property line, including Richmond and Berkeley. And then there's other jurisdictions which have an increase over their normal exterior standard of 20 to 25 decibels. That works about very similar to the second column there, because if you looked at what the proposed standards we had were typically 55 to 65, so if you add 20 to 25 to that, it's about in the same range as what Richmond and Berkeley are currently using. So, construction noise ordinance or suggested update is to use the existing noise standards plus a 20-decibel increase. As I said, that's consistent with Santa Monica and Seattle. It does exempt pile driving. Pile driving is a unique construction activity. It's inherently noisy. You know, to put a noise standard to it would have to be really high. I think the Federal Transit Administration uses 90 to 100. And so, most jurisdictions exempt impact noise from such sources. Staff also wanted us to look at other sources like leaf blowers. The existing ordinance has leaf blowers, considers them, but only as, similar to construction as a time, time-of-day allowance. And we're proposing just to treat them as a construction equipment, similar to a construction Parties and gatherings. Existing ordinance talks about plainly audible, the property line. I think, you know, most parties, if they're outdoor areas, are going to be noticeable, so it's very, it's somewhat vague. And we're proposing to, you know, to use the, our exterior noise criteria for such sources as well. There's some updates, proposed updates to the exemption, exemptions, including schoolgrounds, you know, things like bands and football games, things of that nature. Activities on parks and playgrounds, like open space, if you have live music and things like that. Emergency activities obviously are usually excluded and are proposed to be excluded as well. And that is a really brief synopsis of what we've been proposing, so I'm sure we'd like to hear what you guys think and, you know, what your concerns are and what your suggestions are.
I just have a question. I didn't see anything related to car alarms. Is that something that can be ordinance put against, or?
Yeah, that's a tough one. It would definitely, let me see if I can control this at all. I mean, that would be an L-max, but I mean, that's, that's a tough one to enforce. You know, typically they come out, they end up towing them, at least in Los Angeles. When I lived in L.A., that was a problem.
I would say that's the most common occurrence in all neighborhoods, and they just tend to go on forever. And so I didn't know if there's any way we could mitigate that problem.
I've never seen that included in a.
It'd be hard, I would think. I was hoping you had some, past history that you had a magic silver bullet for.
Right on.
So, ESA, Environmental Science Associates, that sounds very comprehensive. What you're doing is related to sound and noise. Is there a name for the type of individual that does this? Is he called a noise consultant or a sound consultant?
Yeah, typically a noise consultant is the most common. You know, there's also acoustical companies, but they typically get more involved in like designing the acoustics for, you know, concert halls and things like that. But yeah, I mean, noise consultant is, there's no certification process for it. But, you know, there are, some of us are engineers, that, you know, that's more of a design accreditation for, you know, designing, actually designing air conditioning equipment or specific mechanical equipment.
So are there any good jokes that you guys have that you trade back and forth when you're doing these studies?
No, we're usually pretty quiet because we don't want to disturb the measurement process.
So, I hope I don't regret asking this next question. When you're doing the actual measuring, you have the long-term and short-term measurements that you took for Emeryville, and you said you did it between the 15th and 25th of September. Does that mean you have a, some kind of measuring device at a certain location for that three-day, for that 10-day period?
Yeah, typically, I think our collection, we tried to collect both weekday and weekends at each location, so we could get that variance.
Yeah, when we, I'm sorry. Yeah, noise survey consisted of 10 long-term noise measurements, and I don't remember how many. It was a lot of short terms. Each, when we deploy, we deployed five long-term noise meters for the first half of the noise measurement survey. While they're out in the field for that period of time, we conducted short-term noise measurements in locations where we can't put a noise meter, where it could be safely in a place in the city where it won't be stolen or vandalized. Those short-term noise measures were conducted during the same period as that long-term noise measurement. We were able to correlate a day-night noise level for, you know, we were able to correlate data with the two long-term and short-term noise measurements.
So if someone were to come to you, this is from the city of Emeryville, and say, "Where can I go for peace and quiet?", where would that be in Emeryville?
Like I said, the, most of the noise sources are more inland.
So did you measure out at the end of the peninsula?
Yes, yes. We measured, and not only in areas that were very loud, we tried to measure in areas that were, had a very low ambient where people lived. So, so yeah, we tried to cover the car city of Emeryville as best as we could.
So, this report that we've been given, I guess part of it's by the staff and part of it is your information as well. There is reference in, let's see, I think it's on page two of six, about prohibited noises and then prohibited acts. Is that something that you're, I would be able to ask you a question about, or is that for staff?
Are you referring to the noise ordinance, the noise technical report?
Well, it says here, Chapter 13, Noise.
Oh, so that's the noise ordinance?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I thought you were referring to the noise study.
That would be staff, then. Okay, I'll reserve my question for staff.
Commissioner Banta, I can respond to that. If you look, if you have your staff report there.
Yeah.
Whoops, can I, I'm sorry. If you look at appendix or attachment one, that is the current noise ordinance. And prohibited acts are listed on page two of that attachment.
Okay.
And prohibited noises and prohibited acts are listed on page two of that attachment. So that's the current noise ordinance.
So while you're, while we're on the subject, what is the penalty for somebody who violates the noise ordinance?
That'd be an infraction. I can't tell you what the monetary amount is. I could look it up, but I believe it would be an infraction.
Is it a citation that's issued and then you're, that has a dollar penalty attached to it?
Yes, that could be. Usually it's a warning first, but there could be a citation.
I know for gatherings, and the noise ordinance for gatherings, they, if there's a noise complaint, a law, the citizen would contact the police department, they would send over an officer, and they would tell the person who's major in noise to cease, and if they need to be called back again, they'd be responsible for the cost of them actually coming out. So there is a monetary.
You were at that party, too.
So, if there's going to be a pop quiz on everything you told us, I want to be excused from taking it, okay?
Do you have questions?
Commissioner Banta, I can answer the question about penalties. And like Charlie said, it is an infraction. Usually it's a fine of $100 for the first offense, and it escalates to 200 for the second, and 400 for the third.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Is that in one day? Like if the officer has to come back multiple times in one day, or is that for the, you know, run with the property? How do you count the times?
So, that is looking at the noise ordinance, the chapter 13, the one in Title V, where that's going to be your loud parties. So, it could be if an officer goes out multiple times because, and writes a ticket each time because each one would be a separate offense. If it's going to be a violation under the planning regulations, then it would usually be day-by-days, an ongoing violation.
Got it, thank you.
Question?
Yeah, regarding law enforcement, I think it was mentioned in the presentation as well as in the report that law enforcement can actually be trained to use noise measuring devices. Are there local police departments or police departments in the Bay Area that actually employ the use of noise measuring equipment?
I'm not aware of it. I know the city of San Francisco has a noise enforcement officer, but they are not a peace officer. So they will go, and they are trained and are able to implement their, you know, their ordinance. I'm not aware of, you know, of any existing police department that's actually goes out with noise meters, but that may well happen. As a professional, my experience is with implementing SEQA and monitoring noise levels after they're already existing, so I'm like usually trying to help a client who's already been notified that they're in violation of the noise ordinance. So yeah, I, you know, I have limited knowledge of what, you know, what the frequency of police departments that have that capability.
So if a city were to adopt objective quantitative-based noise standards, noise ordinance standards, how would then the law officer, officer be typically trained to enforce that?
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, it would be a reasonably easy thing to do, you know, a couple hours. I mean, it's not that, it's not that complex. The important thing is having the meter, having the right kind of meter and having it programmed correctly. And then after that, it's just a matter of reading the output.
So it's not a matter of just trying to purchase noise measuring equipment for officers or?
Well, I mean, obviously you're going to need a noise meter if you're going to be implementing a quantitative standard.
How much, if an officer carried it, how much would that cost?
A level-two meter is probably around, what, 2,500?
Yeah. A Type 1 noise meter, depending on the software that you would have on it, for your case, you wouldn't need to have to measure one-third octave bandwidth, you just have to log data. In this case, it's the L-50. So a noise meter with logging capability from a company like Larson Davis typically costs, and then off the top of my head, because I purchased one last year, was about, I want to say like, like $5,000. But that's a Type 1 noise meter, and usually those are used for like, something that you'd use like for a compliance monitoring for a power plant, where you need really accurate data for the type of monitoring that law enforcement here in the city of Emeryville would be doing. be able to be doing, would be more in the case of need of a type-two noise meter. It's not as accurate as type-one, but it's accurate enough to give you a good reading. Type-two noise meters with a logging capability, it's about, around $2,000.
Gotcha. And to have a type-one or type-two recorder ready to go, how long does it take to like set it up, or is it just automatic?
It depends on your settings. You could program the noise meter to log L-50 noise levels for a certain period of time, and you could see on the screen, and law and office, you know, the officer could actually see the screen and see what level they're at, and determine whether or not there's a violation occurring. I'd strongly recommend that law enforcement be taught how to adjust those settings, which isn't that difficult, just in case they're out in the field and someone, they push the wrong button or something like that. These noise meters are relatively simple to use. Someone who knows how to use a calculator, for example, could you be able to use these type of noise meters with the proper instructions?
Thank you.
Yeah, I have a question about the two tables, the table 22 and 23, that you displayed at the end of the presentation. I noticed that the measurements for industrial in the city of Emeryville, that your nighttime for industrial is lower, significantly lower than daytime. And then in the recommended exterior noise levels, you recommended a 70 and a 70. And I just wondered if you had a comment on why that decision?
I don't know if that's reflective of the noise measures that we took. I mean, is that?
Yeah, looking at other cities' noise standards, usually they have high noise levels for industrial areas because they're inherently loud. The highest noise levels were around 66 decibels, but during noise survey, it was only a small snapshot of the soundscape. I thought it'd be a good idea to have some like flexibility, since industrial areas are inherently loud areas, I could have, may have not picked up noise sources like a loading truck or a loud bang or something like that, that just didn't show up, didn't occur during my noise survey.
Okay. And I wonder, just because right now we have, we have some of our industrial areas with multifamily residential in it. And so the ability to have that higher noise level may not be a good thing, given that it's a pretty small community.
That, the noise threshold, that's seven decibel, that's not for a residential, that's a noise threshold for people at the industrial area.
But they're close to each other. If you look at the zoning, they're right next to each other.
That's correct, yes.
Yeah.
So the idea is that in the residential zoning, the residential standard would apply?
You have to speak near the microphone.
The idea being that the residential standard would apply to the residential receivers. The 70s across the board for office technology and industrial are just, are common, you know, because they're not sensitive land uses, you don't apply, you know, we apply a very lenient threshold for those sources.
Sure. No, my point is that the land uses are not far apart in this community. They're not, that it's not like you have a whole industrial district that is totally in its own area, and the residential is totally in its own area. This is a much more mixed use.
Right.
And that's why I'm sort of just looking at it critically and saying, oh, you know, we should think about that because that's, that's the most different from what's going on.
I mean, in one respect, we could, you know, because industrial uses and office technology uses are not usually complaining about noise, you know, we could potentially not even have them in the standard, but we presented them in the tables, though we had the full spectrum of land uses.
Yeah, and I, you know, and I was just sort of, I was struck by the contrast of the measurements to, to the zoning standards, and where there was variation and where there wasn't. And, you know, so it was, you could see that the nighttime multifamily residential had a differential, not as much as the industrial.
Right.
And you could see that the daytime multifamily residential had a differential, not as much as the nighttime. And so there was, there were some choices made about where, you know, intensity is allowable, a higher intensity than what is happening now is allowable. And I know there are limitations to where you measure it and things like that.
Right.
But, but I just wanted to note that, you know, I was noticing those.
No, it's a good point, because everything else, everything else was tailored to our noise measurement effort.
Yeah.
Whereas those two are not. Those are a little more like a general, what a general plan, land use compatibility might be.
Okay. No, and I just wanted to sort of point it out and discuss it a little bit, and just make sure that it.
That's a good point. It's probably something we should revisit.
Okay. I think we should discuss it a little bit more later, but this is, with the study session, we have members of the public who are wishing to speak.
I wanted to ask a question that came up. With the equipment for the meters, what is the longevity of their calibration? How often do they need to be calibrated? And how difficult are they to calibrate?
They're generally really easy to calibrate. I mean, you basically, you know, insert the measurement probe into, into the calibrator, and it takes, you know, 30 seconds.
So would it be something you want to calibrate before you actually use it every time?
Yes.
Okay.
Now, ideally, the calibrator needs to be calibrated, and the meter needs to be certified on a regular basis.
Because if someone's getting a ticket, then they're going to lawsuit, well, how, when was your equipment last calibrated?
Right.
How effective was it? And, you know, we're just going to get into a long, protracted thing over measuring these things. And I don't want to see our police officers getting in these long-term debates over a little bit of noise in the neighborhood. So I just wanted to put that out there. And going on about your comment about the noise areas, I think a good example of where that's going to become a problem, and we were going to want to further discuss this, is I'm thinking of Colter Steel and Forge and the new Nady Site project. Because Colter Steel and Forge is probably one of the noisiest industrial things we have, and they're legal, they're, you know, they're there, and pretty soon we're going to have apartments right across the street from that. So we have areas where there's going to be some real conflict. So as we process this, we're going to need to think of those things.
What is that facility?
Colter Steel and Forge. Their steel plant, they stamp and pound, and it stinks, and, but that's not a noise issue. But yeah, it's definitely a steel plant.
And use compatibility issue.
Yeah. And then right across, literally across the street will be a seven-story apartment building. And so that's what she was relating to, is that is our industrial area, that's what it's zoned for. And I don't know how we can mitigate, and they're, they're there, they've been there, and I don't know that we can lower their noise level to where it wouldn't work where they could do their job.
Right. Before we go into discussion, let's hear from the members of the public. So we have cards, speaker cards, from former Commissioner Joe Lutz.
I would also note that we have put at the dais in front of you, an email that was received today from Mr. Lutz.
Good to see you all. Good to see some old friends. Name's Joe Lutz, I'm at Watergate. I moved here in '74, so Watergate's pretty old. I met Commissioner Banta around that time. And Watergate, when it was built, where I'm at, Emery Cove, which is bounded by Admiral, Anchor, and Trader Vic's, we have, they're relatively small units, so we have open-air decks that we use because we need the access. And we also leave our windows open for air circulation because we don't have air conditioning. So this is, this was not a problem until Trader Vic's decided after about 10 or 15 years to have a deck where they had parties. And that's where we've had a lot of problems. Charlie and Maru will fill you in. I've sent you a little bit of a note to give you some ideas. Now, Trader Vic's has been stepping up to the plate to help us out, and they're willing to do some mitigations on the deck, and they're waiting on the noise ordinance. I do have a couple of issues. I think staff did a really good job, and ESA did a really good job. I was a little bit surprised to see that there was no sound intensity mentioned on there. Sound intensity increases 10 times for a 10 dB increase, and that's the thing that really injures the hearing and can affect the perceived volume. So that's an important thing. The other things I'd like to point out was on page seven of the, looks like the ESA report, let me go back to something else, I'm sorry. Starting with the Planning Commission staff report on page five, you have Folsom, that has exterior noise from 10 to 7:00 AM at 45 and 50 dB, which, and exterior is in there too. And I think that's much more appropriate for the area that we're in, which is that Emery Cove, which is extremely quiet. If you go to, sorry about this, page seven of the report, this is the measurements done at Fran's place, and you'll see the nighttime is at 43, 43, 46, and 49 dB. The 49 dB, I don't know, I have a DBA meter that was certified by STAN's certification, it was on. Fran's was certified by his, and it was on. And we've, we normally had 43 to 45 dB. Give me one more second.
One more.
Okay. What I'd like to, like to ask is why we're going to 10:00 PM instead of 9:00 PM, which is what our current noise ordinance is? And I'd like to see the, the proposed 60 and 55 down to 45 and 50 on page 66.
Thank you. Okay, we have a card from Mary Eileen Farrell.
I'm going to switch.
Okay.
Can Fran go first?
Fran Chapetta.
I think he wants us to be 45 and 50.
Sorry, people, we have three minutes apiece.
Hi, everyone. I'm Fran Chapetta, and I live at Watergate, directly on the cove where Trader Vic's is located. And I live in the residence where ESA had placed one of their testing meters, so that was my deck. I am extremely concerned about how the noise ordinance will deal with our particular problem, which is noise emanating from Trader Vic's outdoor deck. In particular, I would like the Planning Commission and the City Council to bear in mind that this deck is located on Trader Vic's property. I'm talking about Trader Vic's deck. Located right on their property line. There's no buffer zone, no mitigation has been done at all. Just today, as a matter of fact, there was a large gathering on this deck, midday, around noon, where, and I too have a meter that was calibrated with STAN's. We came up to the exact figures. So I recorded the sound today. This is noon, and, I'm going to flip a page here. This is what I came up with. Ambient sound from my deck was 44 to 47 dBs today. The sound of people gathered on the deck brought it up to 53 to 57 on my deck. And then I walked over to Trader Vic's to the property line, and it was 60 to 65 dBs, and they were just talking and laughing. This is with no music, no shouting, and no screaming, which is what they do in a typical party. So please consider our unique situation of sound bouncing around and being amplified with your consideration of to acceptable noise levels. We would like to be able to certify our meters with the Emeryville Police Department's certification tool, provide readings in a manner that is actionable to the police department, and what would be the appropriate way to capture this? So we're willing, the three of us are willing to use our noise meters and work with the police, for sure. Personally, I don't believe they need a $2,000 meter, $100 meter, because of the range that we're talking about will be adequate. So thank you for thinking of us, and appreciate it.
Thank you. Mary Farrell?
Hi. Thank you for this opportunity. I live between Joe's place and Fran's place. The sound from Trader Vic's, multiple parties a day on some days, is amplified by the water and amplified by bouncing against the buildings, and it will wake the dead when they're out there screaming drunk. This used to be, the deck was just, people would wander outside and talk. Now they have a bar out there, and they get drunk and they scream. The noise meters that Joe and Fran have only cost around $100. To our knowledge, the police have never sighted them ever. I have gone down there and talked with the police in person to try and do a citizen's arrest because Trader Vic's refused to quiet a party with drunken people screaming. And sometimes they're screaming foul language. This is, we're talking, we're talking about like an outside sports venue within 40 feet of someone's porch. This is not acceptable. What they will do is that there'll be mumble, 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 and then somebody will say something, and then everybody screams. You can't go out there on a warm day. We have to close our windows. We need to have the police department have standards where they can go straight to citations with a penalty. This is egregious. And I know that Joe has been working with them, and there are some things that they have improved, like the emptying the garbage and, you know, covering the garbage, letting people who supposed to park on Anchor Street being able to park there when they couldn't before. That's improved. The main issue has always been the deck. It is so disruptive. It, I'm practically shaking thinking about it right now. Let's see if I want to, let's see. I'd also like to have a meter at my place, so if Joe and Fran are not available, I can provide the readings on my meter. They need to enclose their deck if they're going to continue with parties out there. They've done nothing to mitigate the sound, waiting to see what the city's going to do. But in the meantime, they have not done anything to make it better for us with the deck noise. We wonder how the cabaret license fits. I wonder how the cabaret license fits into this, because if they're having loud parties, you know, it's like a cabaret out there. They need to take that noise inside. Leaf blowers are another major problem. When I skimmed over the report, I didn't have time to look at it word by word, but I thought that the standard was not the lowest standard for leaf blower, and Watergate has horrible leaf blower noise. And I represent the Residents Oversight Group, which has at least 80 members, and the leaf blower noise is one of the top of the list of problems that they have with Watergate. I appreciate your listening. Thank you.
Thank you. Ron Freund.
Hi, my name is Ron Freund. I also live at Watergate, and I'm not going to talk about Trader Vic's. But my wife is going to speak next, but she has a cold, and as I understand it, she can yield time to me. Is that correct?
Is that correct, Charlie?
Up to the chair.
I'll try to be brief, though.
Try to be brief.
Okay. So I have some questions first, before I make a comment, which I would hope you could direct staff to respond to either tonight or in a report. It could be staff or ESA, either one. The first one is, how were the 15 comparison cities chosen? Is there a list of criteria? Are there models outside California or even abroad we should consider? Third, is there a proposal for quiet zones around the railroad crossings? When I read up on the decibel level of trains, it reaches 140 to 150 decibels at the time, I guess, of the whistleblowing, which is past the pain threshold. We can hear it at Watergate on a clear night, so. Fourth, is there anything we can do about motorcycle and sports car revving and boom boxes? I don't know if it's possible. Fifth, can we limit truck idling time below? Fifth, can we limit truck idling time below the state level? The state level is five minutes. I think it's too long. And especially at Watergate, we have a lot of movers coming, and when they leave their trucks idling, it's, it's very noisy. For Watergate specifically, and I really want an answer to this one. Does the proposal mean that no landscaping equipment can exceed, even for a few ear-piercing minutes, the noise level of 80 decibels, which is the 60 baseline plus the 20 increment that ESA recommended? And that would be 75 decibels at night. Why is it a 20-decibel increment? I don't think we can say that leaf blowers are inherently loud, like construction. To limit, to lump them together, I think, is a, is a mistake. Leaf blowers do not have a nature, and there's nothing inherent that leaf blowers cannot be made quieter. So I'd like us to look at other cities and that limit leaf blowers or set lower decibel levels to compare to. Because let's try and be the model. Let's find the best possible ordinance we can make to make the quality of life better in our city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And do you, does Mrs. Freund want to speak?
Well, I sort of, I was hoping that some of those, how would you respond? How are these questions gonna be?
I think those are questions that are going to be addressed by staff and ESA in their further, we're just, this is a study session, and we're just taking, we're, we're asked specific questions, and we're considering specific issues. The council is the one who are making final determinations on these things. So the council forum would probably be the more important one to, to make those points at. But they'll, they'll hear those questions, definitely.
Okay. Prior, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Seeing no one else that wishes to speak, we'll bring it back to the commission for discussion. Anyone wanna?
I don't wanna start.
Who would like to, who'd like to say something? Linda would like to say something.
I don't have very many comments. I agree with, you know, staff's picking option one in this proposal. I'm going through the questions here. So I guess I'll just go one by one. I do agree with the proposed exterior noise standards based on the zone areas, as well as interior noise standards to be included in the ordinance, because as Commissioner Thompson said, we do have a lot of mixed use in the city. And I'm okay with having the construction noise standards be based on time. And the, the exemptions seem appropriate to me, so.
Who else says?
I would just go down the list and say that I agree with Commissioner Burra. That's, this is a good start. I am just concerned with, as being someone, I wasn't on the General Plan of State Committee, but I was very closely attached to working on that. And I know that we worked very hard on making an industrial area that we wanted to keep. And I think it's, we do have a lot of people, like in Liquid Sugarlofts, that are pretty close, those areas, and then Nady Site is gonna be pretty close. So we need to look at how we could address those border areas, that businesses can still come here. Luckily, we're gonna get into more higher tech and probably quieter rather than heavy industrial. But Cult of Forge is here. I don't know what are the other areas, but we need to look at that. We need to see how those, how those areas transition, because I think they're pretty important to quality of life. So other than that, I, I agree with the items to be considered and what Commissioner Burra said.
I too also agree in terms of the questions in one and two, that the exterior noise standards and the interior noise standards should be included in the ordinance. I have some concerns in terms of noise levels, where my fellow commissioners have mentioned where the industrial sites meet residential, and think that also should be something that we consider moving forward.
Well, I actually don't understand a lot of the technical aspects, despite your comprehensive presentation, which is to say that I don't feel like I would know one way or the other, whether this was a good noise level or not. I think that the, the community in general needs to understand why you are making the recommendations you are, just in plain English. What it is that, that, for example, as I understand it, you're recommending a, an increase of 20 decibels above something, I don't know what exactly, for many of these conditions. So I think it's, I think the, I guess my, my request would be to have things made more easily comprehensible as to why we, you are making the recommendations you are. Second thing is, the, the penalty for exceeding the decibel level, it's been explained to me that there would be a citation that could be issued. First one's $100, second one's $200, third one's $400. Those are significant amounts for an individual citizen to pay, and they should be, they, they would be, you know, pow, I think, significant discouragements to continue on with the noise. But an institution like Trader Vic's, for example, I think that those, those dollar amounts would not really be necessarily discouraging to them. They might weigh that against the money that they're making with the party and decide, well, that's just the price of doing business. So there might be, it brings up another question, which I think is really at the heart of all this. And that is that, that really, this should, in a sense, be about conflict resolution. That, you know, arguments over noise can become very personal, and they can escalate quickly, and they can cause tremendous discomfort and dislocation to the individuals involved with it. So I wonder if, in your experience as consultants, is there, are there any kind of clever ways that cities have developed to address a peaceful and orderly resolution to conflicts such as these that might come up? I don't know if that's a, that's a non-starter of a question or not, but it seems that it's, that, that we are gonna be, we're, we're talking about creating regulations that will, will be the, the rules, the kind of the, mark out the playing field for how these conflicts are, are resolved. So if there's any advice or mechanisms that help to accelerate the resolution to, to, in a way that's satisfactory to both parties, that's, certainly would be welcome to hear that.
So I have a question for staff before I offer comments and a set of questions. Will this issue come to this body in a subsequent study session? Or will it be now dealt with the City Council exclusively after tonight?
Well, it kind of depends. The noise ordinance is not part of the planning regulations, so it's not part of the municipal code that requires a Planning Commission recommendation before going to the council for adoption. However, the performance standards, of course, are part of the planning regulations, and the general plan is another thing that requires a Planning Commission recommendation to the council. So if, in order to ensure internal consistency, as Mira mentioned, between the noise ordinance and the performance standards and/or the general plan, if we have to amend any of those other things, then those will need to come to the commission for a recommendation before going to the council. Just at face value here, it appears that we are going to, if, if we go with the consultant's recommendation for the zone-based noise levels, and if they are similar to what's being proposed, that's different than what's in the current performance standards. So in order to make them consistent, we would have to amend the performance standards as well. So I think what, we are planning to have a study session on this at the City Council in January. And after we get the council's direction, we'll have a better sense of if we're going to need to amend the performance standards and the general plan. My sense is that we probably will need to amend the performance standards. I'm not sure about the general plan. So I suspect that this probably will be coming back to you for a recommendation. But if it turns out that the only amendment that's made is to the noise ordinance and nothing else, then that would not need to come back to you.
Gotcha. Thank you, Charlie. Appreciate that. So a set of comments I want to make, just not, just directed, not just at my colleagues on the dais, but also maybe to the City Council, maybe to offer some, some direction, some questions that can formulate in advance of when they consider this issue. It seems like the objective standard, while it might, you know, might be something that's really fair to enforce, I see a lot of problems in trying to enforce an objective standard. Conceptually, I agree with trying to come up with it, but I think enforcement might be a really difficult thing to do, namely, I think there might be a reason, this is all conjecture, it's just an assumption, but I think there's a reason why there's no police department in the Bay Area according to our consultants that don't have mobile voice cords that police officers carry. One, they're expensive. And two, if they are expensive, reliable ones are expensive, I don't want our law enforcement officers to be worried about breaking or damaging them in the normal course of their business or when responding to emergencies. That's, that's one issue I'd just love further study on by, by us in the City Council. Another issue that comes up for me is that having, trying to, say we train officers to, to use equipment, which might be, it seems like it's hard to get around the, the use of not using equipment, if we were to create numerically-based objective standards. If you have law enforcement using them, that could potentially turn into Fourth Amendment issues, of search and seizure issues, when you're collecting data from, from residents, from business owners, what have you. So it could be a problem that could open up our city for all kinds of liabilities. So I would just like further study on that issue, and whether that has been something that's been encountered by other jurisdictions. I'm intrigued by this idea of a fixed recorder, though, for hotspots and problem areas. I think that is one option to certainly look at, given just the concerns of our neighbors at Watergate. One thing I think would lead to further illumination about what extent of problem is there is, whether it be us or, and/or the City Council is examine, what is the record of citations that has been imposed upon Trader Vic's? I would like that, I would like that as an official report, if, to corroborate that, because if somehow maybe enforcement is lacking, or it's not working as a deterrent, something is missing. So I think getting a record of what the citation record is of Trader Vic's, whether there is or is not, I think would provide some more complete analysis. I'll conclude my comments there.
Yeah, no, I think, I think I agree with the, the exterior noise standard, and just, I just wanted to kind of make sure that it's tailored right, and you heard my concerns around that. The interior noise standard, I think that's a good idea and included in the ordinance. I think same with the, with the construction. I did wanna just note, I wanted to make sure that the proposed exceptions is the, for consideration, that I'm considering the right one. The school grounds, the parks, and playgrounds, the mechanical devices, and anything that's outdoor gathering sponsored by the city. I just, I noticed it was different than what the City Council suggested, you know, that the children at play was listed as a separate one. So I just wanna make sure I'm looking at the right.
You are looking at the right thing, and children at play is supposed to be included. I will correct that in my report to the City Council.
Okay. And I just noticed that that was different, so I wasn't sure. Okay, then I would say that if that's supposed to be included, I would agree with that. Those are my comments. Thank you.
I think it would be useful to have in the report, in the staff report, that chart that talked about what levels of decibel difference are perceptible. And I'm recalling that you were saying that 10-decibel difference can be perceived as being twice as loud, so I'm wondering about the idea of making allowances for certain things to be 20 decibels above. That seems like, I need to get a better understanding of that. I think it's good to have some kind of objective standards, and it sounds like something that a police department could work with. But I'm really kind of concerned about the fact that our town is such a patchwork of different zoning areas. And I'm looking at the zoning map here and seeing that there are mixed-use, non-residential that have 75 and 75 decibel levels, you know, daytime and nighttime, on the same block without any even street separation from residential high, which has a levels of 65 and 60. So I'm concerned about how that works, when you've got somebody next door, across the street, or in the adjacent building that has a different allowable noise level. That seems kind of, that seems like it could be really problematic. So I don't know how that would be addressed. I think that it's useful to get these readings. I mean, clearly, we have areas along the railroad track where there is noise now, and we hope that we'll get quiet zones, which won't resolve everything. But again, on one, a whole group of properties adjacent to the tracks have a 65 and 60 decibel, you know, rating here, and other ones in the same relationships to the tracks have 75. So I'm a little concerned about the way this is broken out and whether it really is realistic. So finding the pattern that works makes, seems to be a lot of, seems to be a big challenge. I think that it would be good to have interior noise standards. I think that though, it's, you know, when you're in an apartment and you're hearing the people next door, it's not a pleasant thing. It's good to have some more insulation stuff. Regarding the construction noise, I know that some construction noise is necessarily gonna be 20 decibels higher than the, you know, allowable noise, but I think we need to combine that with time limits. I don't think we need to, I think we definitely shouldn't remove the time limits that are on these excessive noise situations. A list of proposed exceptions sounds appropriate, and I think making specific mention of the truck idling could be a really important thing, too, considering how much mixed use we have in the city and how many deliveries and that. So addressing truck idling seems to be an important thing to include. And that's the only, that's my comments for this. You have another one?
Yeah, as usual. So I have a question for staff. Is there any report or record of the number of noise complaints that are lodged in the city every year? I guess they would be lodged with the police department?
Yeah, that would. Primarily, that'd be the police department. We get a few, one or two maybe a year. Those typically are about the performance standards in the planning regulations. Somebody has a loud piece of HVAC equipment on a roof across from them that we have to deal with. But that, those are pretty few and far between. I'd say it's less than two a year.
So do you?
I think that the report that was included with the earlier, with the February 2016 council session, said that there were 268 complaints in 2015. So that's like, you know.
So that's, and that ranges?
Yeah.
Every, of every type, I presume, like?
That was to the police department.
Well, those, well, by every type, it's every type that would be a violation of the noise ordinance, not the performance standards. But that's 99% of them, probably.
So, you know, I think that Commissioner Kang pointed out that problem of enforcement So, you know, I think that Commissioner Kang pointed out that problem of enforcement, it's a challenging puzzle, because without some kind of measuring device, you really are not going to be able to prove that somebody has been exceeding the criteria. And yet, it would be, I mean, what I'm hearing, what I heard the consultants say is that San Francisco has a noise officer, or, is that right? So that would be, you know, probably not something that this city's going to do, but, yeah, I don't know. It's a, it's a tricky, complex thing. Yeah.
Okay, well, I guess that's our direction as far as what we're passing on to City Council, and thank you very much for that. So that would close the study session, and we're on to Commissioner comments. I would say happy birthday to Commissioner Garro.
Thank you. I'll be on a plane in the morning time.
Nice time in Hawaii. We'll be thinking about you when we're here next week.
Yeah, exactly.
Happy birthdays to you, to you too, Gail.
Thank you.
Yesterday.
Okay. Then we'll adjourn the meeting.